Right. Okay. It's hard for me to understand.
And their stickers and...
Thank you. I'll call meeting to order for Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners, June 10th, 2019, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
What is this project agreement here for?
Um, that's probably the, is that the assessment? I don't, look, I'll start with what I have here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, North Central Kansas Casa, um, they have their budget request in for $7,000 for the 2020 year, and that's what this is.
What is that?
The, it's the, it's the, it's the court-appointed...
Oh, child support, yeah.
I forget what the S. A. Court-appointed, S., S., whatever it is, something, yeah.
It's okay, it's true.
But it's child advocacy where it's a third-party person who volunteers, who's not affiliated with the case.
And we funded them in the past, right?
Every year, the county, the several counties that they deal with, give them a portion of the budget. Unfortunately, Lincoln has the lowest participation, one of the lowest participations in the area for volunteerism to be a part of the program. So, okay, it's Cloud, Republic, Jewel, Mitchell, and Lincoln and Washington.
Okay.
Um, but yes, in the past, we have just allocated an amount...
Child add, that's what you said, okay, okay.
That person can go and be with the child individually, can take them places, go to the court hearings, speak on their behalf, give them testimony as far as what they've witnessed, things like that.
You go through a training...
Do a training program to become certified.
...to appear court, work at the court of the child, because not for the social work, but for the child, which sometimes leads to...
We have enclosed, this is from the Board of Education from USD 298. "We have enclosed your information, notice the public hearing and issuance of industrial revenue bonds proposed by the City of Lincoln pursuant to KSA 121749C and KSA 121749D."
That's for US Tower, probably.
"The hearing is today at 7:30 PM in regard to issuance by the issuer of its taxable industrial revenue bonds," yes, US Tower Corp., "not to exceed the principal amount of $8 million, and in regard to an exemption from ad verum taxation of property constructed or purchased with the proceeds of such bonds." Exemption, exemption, as in ever?
Normally, they're like five years...
An abatement.
Oh, well, it is an exemption, so the value gets removed, it doesn't get abated. Abated means that the value stays on, and we tax at that level, but then we return it back to them. So the exemption is like an outright exemption that reduces the value. So if they were gonna add a $100,000 building, I don't know what they're doing, but if you were gonna add $100,000 worth of value, you would just come off of it, so that way we're not taxing and not, not receiving enough money. So they do the exemptions that way, so they just come off.
Okay, so 7:30 PM tonight at the City Hall is the public hearing for the eight, not to exceed the principal amount of $8 million in taxable industrial revenue bond for US Towers.
Would the county be, uh, is that the city sponsoring all that, or does the county get involved with that too, like funding or backing it up or something like that?
No, it would be separate funding from the city as far as backing the bonds, but, but what I'm understanding is that the...
In other words, do we have involvement with that?
Well, by way of the exemption of their increased property tax, is what I'm understanding. But, but Dawn, are you saying exemption, a permanent exemption?
That's... Normally with IRBs, they're either five years or 10 years, you'd say.
Okay.
Ten years usually.
It should say what's in it.
It doesn't say, it just says...
Usually like a, like...
It's, it's basically like an enticement to get them to build something and...
Tax abatement for 10-year type thing to get them to come, yeah, like used to be...
It says, um...
We did that before.
"Resolution of the issuer to be considered for adoption on June 10th, which is today, indicating the intent of the governing body of the issuer to issue such bonds and a report analyzing the costs and benefits of such property tax exemption are on file with the Office of the Clerk," or will be as soon as completed. So is that, do you have possession of that?
Uh, the City.
Oh, the City Clerk, okay. So we don't know what their intent is for the length of time for the exemption.
That'd be something that'd probably come up tonight, probably.
Yes.
This is the Hay State Historical Society.
Okay, so, yes, let's address this one. "Resolution 2019-13, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that pursuant to KSA 2016 7450-223, the Board of County Commissioners expresses intent to participate in the RAS student loan repayment program, Rural Opportunity Zone." Lincoln County has been designated a rural opportunity zone, and, thank you. Let's see. "We agreed to pay in equal shares with the state of Kansas the outstanding student loan balance of any resident individual for five years," at a match rate up to, I believe it was five thou, uh...
Fifteen thousand.
Six, six thousand a year for an individual.
Oh.
Uh, it's $1,500 for a person, so we do four students.
Okay. Six thousand total for the year out of our, and this money is coming from the interests collected on the web fund. Well, we already have students in this program now, so we really...
So this is a non-joking policy we've done before?
Right, so originally, we started with two students, and we added a third. The web fund approved this year for an eighth student to start, so that tells you how many students there are, and there's quite a few students on the waiting list. But basically, what it's supposed to do is entice college graduates to come back to their local communities or to a rural, small rural community, knowing you have to go back to a local, and then they can apply for those funds. What this particular resolution is adding in is foundations and cities to be able to participate in the program. So if, say, for example, the City of Lincoln or Sylvan Grove, or if they really wanted to sponsor somebody, especially if it was one of their employees, they can sponsor them. Foundations would be like Economic Development Foundation, and so on and so forth. So they've always allowed counties and businesses to participate. So it's a way for us to be able to help students without it necessarily coming out of our pockets. So we do fund seven, four students.
You say there's a, there's a waiting list now, you're saying? Now, who determines who gets on it, not the web fund board?
The state does. So they have to apply and do all the paperwork, and that's all kind of out of our hands. We have no idea who is on. I mean, I know who's on just because they sent me an updated list, but I don't know necessarily who has applied, where they're, they're at. They did send me a new list, though, but I have a lot of that information.
It's a state program that we're obligating a matching fund to, to it.
So the state would pick the students, not us, or no, or no, no board from Lincoln is doing it?
Right, it's normally a first-come, first-served. They have to be a new resident in the community. So some of the students are getting turned down because they were already a resident in the community prior to the adoption of the program. So they have to, to show that they're a new resident, they have to submit like a lease or if they bought a home, their, their title or from their home, and things like that. So there's like guidelines, but that's all through the state, and then the state matches that $1,500. So basically, a student can get up to $3,000 if they're on the way back to the program.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
I, I do understand the program, I mean...
Oh, that's fine, though.
The only issue is that it says Lincoln County Commissioners hereby obligate Lincoln County to participate in the RAS student loan repayment program...
I saw that, too.
...for a period of five years, which will be irrevocable. But we've already approved a new person, so they are guaranteed their five years from the state, which we're guaranteeing our match. That doesn't necessarily mean that the web fund has to approve the next person.
Right.
Okay.
So if, if another person applies, we already have so many that we're paying toward, and they're allocating the funds out of the web fund interest.
Okay, okay, I understand that. I saw that too last night reading it online, I'm going, you know, we put the calendar...
To future obligate...
We're obligated to take care of some persons, some, I'm not against college kids and family, but, you know, we can't obligate the county to pay for it.
I know, I don't, I don't approve...
But now that I understand it better with the web fund, that's fine, as far as I can see.
Well, I would say that at this current time, we're obligating to the enrolled participants. It's not that we're telling the web fund that they have to accept new people on their payroll, so to speak, so. I move to approve Resolution 2019-13.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion, questions? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is this your copy or my copy, or do you want to sign this one?
That is the original, so if you guys would like a copy, I'd like it.
No.
I don't need one.
Just come steal each...
2019 R01 Preliminary Resolution and Notice of Proposed Vacation. "On this 10th day of June 2019, a duly constituted regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, Lincoln County, Kansas, all members of said board being present, the matter of a proposed vacation of a certain township line road located in Madison Township comes on for hearing before said board." So do we, do we want to do that now, or should we wait? I mean, this is, we're technically...
This is simply a type of conversation.
Yeah, it's, it's technically a hearing to make sure that we can have...
Do we have any...
We have to...
You will do this resolution, then we will send notice to the landowners, and then you'll have an effective hearing.
Okay, so this is the actual hearing. So we are preparing to have a hearing, and this is the one where we had talked to them both down in the southeast corner, okay. Okay, so basically, we are setting a hearing, um, on June 20th, here it is, I'm sorry, on June 24th at 2019. 2019, June 24th, 2019, at 10:30 AM. Okay, there we are. I'll move to approve Resolution 2019 R01.
I'll second.
Notice of Proposed Vacation. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Several copies.
Okay, this one...
I really only need one.
Okay.
Multiple copies, that's okay.
Well, this also has the addresses.
The street, the, uh, legal, the description.
But the, but the landowners have been notified, correct?
They will be, it goes out sort of by mail today.
Okay. And then we have a project agreement. This is for the Historic Preservation Fund that we applied to be able to receive funding to get the assessment done, so that we can have the plans in order to move forward with the renovation of the stone steps...
The Historical Society, right?
Through the, through the, yeah, Historic Preservation Fund is what it's called, through the state. And we've been talking about redoing the steps that are deteriorated, as well as potentially painting the wood trim around all the windows and some of the other pieces of the courthouse that are wooden. There's a lot of detail in here as far as what needs to be done. Dawn has offered, thankfully, to be the, what do you consider, to the grant administrator? So thank you for doing that.
In total, it would be what, $22,460?
Um, for us?
Well, that's your grand would be the, the budget, the budget to fix all this stuff.
Well, not to fix, this is just the assessment.
Oh, assessment, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, that's a lot of...
Total project cost $22,460, and we will be reimbursed 60%, so up to $13,300. That means we, our match will be $8,867.
That's for an assessment, for the whole pool.
Yes, but in order to be able to get the grant to do the work, we have to go through this process, so I'm in favor of that. And it's been on the table the entire time that I've been on the commission, so I do think we need to move forward.
Yeah.
Unless you have, unless you have a viable objection.
No, I have no problem.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the project agreement for, with the Historic Preservation Fund grant to proceed, so we, part of the step to... To the assessment, and produce a report for the Lincoln County Courthouse in Lincoln, Kansas.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries, and you have the other copy.
This is the original.
Okay.
You want to sign something, or Alexis, or you? Maybe it's just you.
I think so. Representative of... Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have a notification from Lincoln County Economic Development about the historic preservation analysis that was done for the downtown properties in both Lincoln and Sylvan. So this looks like to be the formal report. And this will be available, I believe it's available online, yes, copies are available at livlincolncounty.com, and so if anyone wants to look that up, you can also contact Lincoln County Economic Development, they could walk you through how to find that. But basically, it was a grand assessment of the downtown buildings on Main Street in both towns to see what qualifies to be put on the registry.
Do we need to vote on something or not?
No, that is just information for us, and...
Should we do the minutes, or...
Yes. We have two meetings, and I would just say now, we've decided that at least for this month, and while we're working on the budget, maybe even next month, we're gonna start meeting twice a week, because it seems like we're falling behind. We always have a full agenda, and we're not able to kind of open anything up to take people if they happen to come in. So, that being said, we're gonna try for Thursdays, Mondays and Thursdays for the next few weeks, same time, 10, okay. So June 3rd, yes, that's fine for now.
And I'd review these minutes, because you may want to talk about it.
I don't, I don't know that I have any corrections or additions.
We could review them a little bit, since people weren't here, maybe, like the June 3rd meeting. Points of interest were that we gave Dustin Forrester, Undershare Forrester came in and requested Casey Zacco to get a six-month raise, and we, so we approved that, a 50 cent per hour raise. Mr. Granzel from the hospital, CEO, came in and talked to us about their budget. Michael O'Hara, Director of Public Works, Michael O'Hara and Tanner Yost came in discussing different issues, and the problems with the, and I guess we hired a new truck driver, rider. Is that right? Yeah.
Yes, we approved a new hire.
For Trinity Hall, we hired him as a new truck driver full-time. There's been problems with his weather, with some of the, up at the lake, with some, one of the roads, kind of on one of those hills up there is kind of collapsing, and what to do with that. Corey Yule requested gravel, I think, to a new residence he's creating, we haven't decided anything on that yet. They've reassigned some workers. Larry Ryder, promoter grader operator, truck driver. Sheldon Fetterman, from truck driver to equipment operator, and, not two of them, I think. Then we talked to OCCK about their services and budget. We had Health Management Insurance Solutions coming in here, we're thinking about different health insurance issues, maybe for next year. We had Scott Day here for Day Insurance Solutions, and Mark Isley of Hub International. And that's basically it, we approved some things, Alexis and I did some...
We, we extended the offer to the EMS interviewee.
Yeah.
And then the next...
We extended, yes, we extended the offer to Derek Walter.
Yeah.
He's accepted the offer, and then this...
That was the next meeting.
Yeah, and then we officially hired him here to start, I think, the 24th, something like that, Dawn, 24th of June, or...
That's what I put in the start date, but I don't have a start date, but 24th.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyway, so that's what we did on the minutes for last week, in a summary.
I move to approve June 3rd, 2019, minutes from the regular Monday meeting.
I second.
Is there, are there any questions, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And yes, as he said, the next, on Thursday, then, we accepted, or we, I'm sorry, we moved to employ Mr. Walter, who had accepted the job offer. What else did we do?
We had some...
Oh, I have a correction. It was not street plumbing for the EMS station, I had talked to Hayward.
Roger Hayward, okay. And then also, we discussed K-Camp, our insurance for the nursing home roof leak issue, and Dawn, you dealt with them right on...
Yes, I haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay, we were in the process of having, or K-Camp is our insurance carrier for the roof, like in the nursing home, they've determined that the hail from two years ago actually had an issue, and we're gonna work with Ray Roofing Contractor to have them fix that, correct, Dawn?
Correct.
We had already replaced the shingled roofing, and it, at the time, the flat roof was not leaking, now that it is, they have attributed that back to the original damage that was done when we got the roof replaced, so we're just working, we did give bids, and that had happened several months ago. So now we're just working on getting that re-roofed there on the flat surface, the TPO, I think it's called. We're still working on getting into the new commission room, so we approved Mr. Ellis to paint that, and we are going to get a telephone there, because we don't have, we don't have a commission line in the basement, so we will have a telephone over there so that we can do conference calls.
Conference calls, mm-hmm.
Thank you to Dawn, who's been letting us use her cellphone. And we approved Emergency Manager David Doe to attend his FEMA Region 7 conference in Omaha, and there was, he was applying for, is it called a scholarship or a grant?
Scholarship.
It is called a scholarship, okay, that would cover 80% of the costs there. We talked about what we would put on the agenda for today, and we decided that we are not going to continue with filling, attempting to fill the HR position until we get the time clock in place to see how much that consolidates the work of the HR person, which will be happening hopefully within the month. And then, also, considering these benefit management companies, that may also reduce the actual workload for the HR person, so we won't be filling that position right away until we do a little bit more analysis on that. And again, I'll just repeat, we are going to be meeting on the 13th, so another Thursday at 10, to just follow up on some of these things. So I move to approve the, the minutes as corrected, I just had that one corrected.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'm just coming in to give us, to give an update and give you my budget. We are getting ready to start on 2020 year appraisal stuff. We will be doing reinspection, or annual reinspection, the 17% we do each other year, Grant Township, Marion Township, a part of Lincoln that is in Marion Township, Highland and Sylvan Grove. And also in that deal, those, we are mailing out ag questionnaires, and it'll be a questionnaire with a map attached of the property, and then also, they have to, you know, let us know if things are correct as we delineate it, and then if they just want us to go to the FSA office and get the information, there is a privacy paper that is FSA-approved paper for them to sign, and we can get the information, otherwise, we can't get any information from the FSA office. And just because it's just these townships, that doesn't mean that there is other corrections that will be done through the year on, on ag stuff, as people come in and tell us or as we see changes and stuff. But those are the, the...
A question about the reappraisal, you said Sylvan Grove, does that mean all of Pleasant Township?
No.
Does that just Sylvan Grove, the city?
The city, okay. Lincoln, the city of Lincoln falls in four different townships.
Uh-huh.
So when we do those townships...
So you just do that portion of the city with the township?
Right, because it breaks...
But Sylvan Grove, you do as a city separately from Pleasant.
Right, because that breaks Lincoln down, because Lincoln's so big, that we break it down, and yeah, so when we do Sylvan, we do it separate, and we don't do it when we do Pleasant.
Okay.
But Lincoln being in the different, four different...
So it's been three years since Sylvan's last...
Six.
Oh, it's every six years?
Yeah, yeah, six years. So we're getting started on that. Like I said, the ag questionnaires will go out in the mail here probably by the end of this month, and we have them request it to be back in by July 30th.
Tell me you can do that.
I'm sorry.
No, you go first.
What is this questionnaire for?
We are required to send out what we call ag mailers, to verify with the landowners that we have the delineation of crop and pasture broke down right.
Correctly, huh?
Right, and if they had CRP, what they...
All that stuff, like the FSA has, or NRCS has all that information, huh?
No, not, not the same as our information.
Really?
No, we have different information, but if they don't know the number of acres, or not sure on the contracted CRP and stuff, if they just want us to go get a map from them, we can.
You can get authority to write that down.
Right, they have to sign this, we can't. Years and years ago, we used to be able to go to the FSA office and say, here's a map, you know, can you help me out, or what's what?
Tell you the information.
Yes, we can't do that anymore. So what we do is we send them a map that shows their property, and then we have the numbers on it, which...
They just approve that that's correct?
That's correct, uh-huh, and they can write the numbers of how many acres they...
Do you catch some errors because of this?
Yes, we do, or we catch a lot of, we catch stuff that people have changed, broke to pasture, pasture, or changed roam, or, you know, things that they...
And you guys don't know about it.
Right, yeah.
So you guys tax CRP a lot differently than pasture versus farmland?
CRP is taxed done just like cropland until the contracts are out, and then, you know, depending on what they do with it.
If they go back to pasture, or go back to pasture?
Pasture, if they leave it as cropland, it stays as cropland, but...
But after that contract runs out, should they notify you guys?
They're supposed to, but we try to send letters out to...
Okay.
We don't have... We don't have, we didn't, like I said, we can't get the information from them. So we don't have every CRP in the system with expiration date.
Well, okay.
So like the ones that will expire the end of this year in September, we will send letters out to them and saying, hey, we see this expired, what did you do with it?
There's a lot of farmers, I'm one, because we'll have CRP, we'll have a contract run out and I don't think even telling you guys about that. Because a lot of people don't, I don't think, know that your appraisal on that is.
Yeah, and we try to inform.
That varied.
Yeah, we try to inform people.
Well, that's good, you sent that letter out.
And stuff, we try to inform people and it's not going on long enough that people know, yeah, we need to tell them.
Okay.
But yeah, we do send out, we do send out quite a few letters and, and maps and stuff for landowners so they can see what we have. And, you know, CRP, that's the only way we can track it is if they let us know.
What were the, could you tell me again, I caught when you said Sylvan Grove City because I was wondering if that was the whole township? But what were the other townships you said?
Grant Township, Marion Township and the part of Lincoln that is in Marion Township.
Okay.
Which is just a little bit.
So you just.
Highland.
Oh, sorry.
And then Sylvan Grove.
So you just do certain townships or towns each year and then rotate around?
Yeah, in a six-year cycle, in a six-year cycle, we will have the whole county.
Everybody, then start over again, huh?
Yeah. And we will be taking, and we will be taking pictures of the houses this year again to update our, our pictures. You know, we did that every so often, but.
Just, um, Mr. McQueen do that?
The pictures when he does the reinspection, yes, yes, he does. Okay, and then the only other thing I have is, here's my budget.
Okay, 2020 year proposed budget, total 111,763.
The only thing I changed is I didn't 50 cent on the raises. I didn't know what, what was, you know.
Does that include Truitt's too?
His contract's on it.
On there, there too.
His contract's on it. Yeah, my budget includes that.
I thought so, but I didn't know.
This portion is the 29,600.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, yeah. But I, I didn't know what to do about salary, so I just did a 50, 50 cents.
You projected a 50 cent raise for both employees and then, okay.
Yes, and everything else stayed the same.
Okay. So last year's approved budget was 105,504. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Do you need it tracked?
We need that.
That's, no, that's yours.
We need it, okay.
That's yours, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Okay, Mr. Doe. Yeah.
Starting with budget information.
Okay.
This is my mayor, that I'm presenting you as my proposed budget. Um, the number down at the bottom, the 56-228, does not include the reimbursements totaling 8651 from Kansas Division of Emergency Management, reference the EMPG Emergency Management Performance Grant and Civic Ready reimbursements that the Civic Ready, I know that's already a set price and, and the Emergency Preparedness Grant, that there could be some variables to that. Uh, but it's, I'm always told that it's similar to the previous year. So again, that 56-228 does not include that money back in.
So you should subtract the reimbursement from the 56, so I think about 48,000, talking about something.
Correct, yes, yes.
What is your particular portion that you're budgeting for the K-Camp insurance?
Um, again, $385.
Yeah.
Out of.
You, you have insurance K-Camp, is that just the total, our total?
That I get billed for the year.
Okay. I just, I didn't see that.
Vehicles and trailers.
Traders, sorry.
Oh, for, okay, property insurance, not, okay, I thought it was a portion by department, then I thought, well, I haven't seen that in any other department. Okay. Vehicles.
Yes, and the two trailers that Lincoln County has.
Okay. Got it.
This Nextech TAAS, that's a, you got a specialized software for, just for you for emergency managing?
No, the, they have it broken down into different training, or, excuse me, IT support levels. Um, again, I went with the high-end one because again, with my computer with the weather information on it and access.
No, I understand.
My laptop, I want to be able to call them at any time and, and get that problem solved.
So Nextech has different options based on.
Last year, I think it was three different levels.
And you got a.
It's on the engine of your computer.
Oh, the software, sure, based on the software, the upgrade or the, uh, the version of software probably for the computer. Okay.
Are you saying the one that the computers replaced?
Yes. Yes.
What's this, on this repeater board, I'm pretty stupid here like I was with the repeater door, repeater board does and what they don't do and all that. Can you explain that to me?
They go around and check sites, towers, trunking, um, again, they're, they're responsible for that, that capacity of the.
The hardware, electronic hardware?
And, and the overall functionality of, yes, of, of the repeater. Um, again, they have a technician that, that is handshake contract, um, lives over in the Minneapolis area. Biannually, he goes around and checks all the equipment and, and recently, within two months ago, there was a problem and there was a constant click, click, click on the repeater. And that click noise came down, came from faulty equipment down in Saline County is where it got tracked to and it was affecting our repeater. Uh, he, he made them aware and that, K-COM is who is contracted with Saline County to resolve any of their repeater problems and he made them aware and then the, the problem got mitigated shortly after that.
Okay. Do we have different towers within Lincoln County?
Yes.
How many are there, you know, approximately? You don't have to know exactly, I just, what carry?
Five or six, one down by the lake, one up by Barnard, one on the hill up here, um.
Okay, so you, then you guys do some test, you go up to those towers and?
Yeah, no, they're, again, he can, he can do that remotely.
He can do it, so really you hire a guy from Minneapolis to actually do the technical end of things.
Yes.
You guys are just oversight of that.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine, thank you. I just didn't know, I didn't know what all that repeater board did and all this and I always wondered what the heck are they?
And then again, like each agency within the county has a, a fee assessed, the city of Lincoln does, both school districts, um, all the fire districts, rescue EMS, myself, all, all funded.
You guys all coordinated together?
Yes, and, and there's representatives from those agencies on the repeater board also.
Sounds good, thanks, David.
Yes, sir.
This Civic Ready Mass Notification System.
Uh-huh.
What does that do? Um, is that, like if there's a tornado coming, you're gonna use that to notify people?
Yes, I do, um, and like, for example, when, when you sign up for the Civic Ready Mass Notification, if, if you sign up for severe thunderstorm warnings, um, you automatically get a notification.
So I could sign up for it on here and I would get a warning?
You can get a text or a phone call or however you'd like.
Is your increase for that line item just an estimate or is that something?
That's just increased for year over year.
I mean, do you already have a price for that? Is that a contract or how do they bill you for that?
Contracted through the year, yes.
And they've told you that it's gonna go up that much?
Yes, they have, yes.
And you think that's definitely needed?
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't disclose, the total budget request for this year is 56,228. That last year's approved budget was 53,617 and the line item that we were talking about, um, from 2018 to 2019, it went up about $160. And then from 2019, 2020, it looks like it's gone up about $400.
But you're happy with them?
Yeah.
They do a good job for you?
Yes, and, and again, like with, with the night that there was a tornado up in the Tipton area, um, once the Sylvan Siren got activated, I had already had the Civic Ready page pulled up with the tornado warning in place and I ended up sending that information out and anybody that signed up for tornado warnings, I'm assuming you got a notification?
I need to do that, I don't have it.
Oh, okay, and again.
You need to show me how to.
Yeah, I, yeah.
It's real easy.
No, okay, yeah, good. No, I think that's a good service, yeah, it's a local and, you know, because there's, you can get on national TV.
Is that what also calls the landline?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If you choose to have.
We get that in the store, yeah, in the store.
Well, it's good because it's a local service for us, you know, because you can get on, fly on radio or Wichita TV, but have a nest, you know, with, with the local, what's really going on.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine. And this fuel, is that just for your truck to?
My county, my county vehicle for any, any training or anything that I go to or participate in, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I don't have anything else. Do you, Alexis?
Nope, we will be working on the budget over the next several weeks and I, maybe you were already in here, I made an announcement. We're gonna be meeting twice a week for a few weeks just to try to get.
Yes, I do.
All of our paperwork in order and we're gonna try to move into the other room. There's a lot going on, so.
Yes, ma'am.
If you have any questions, we'll be more available.
And also just reference, um, activities that I've been doing recently. Um, April 29th, had Incident Command ICS class in the basement of Lincoln Park Manor from 1:00 to 5:00. 12 people that attended the training, city council member from Sylvan and Lincoln, the Sylvan mayor and the Sylvan city clerk, three employees from LCH, the emergency manager from Mitchell and Washington County and the Washington County sheriff and the captain from First Rural Fire here in Lincoln. Wednesday, May 1st, I attended Web EOC Training and Play Center with Jared Heinzey, the First Rural Fire captain, learned about updates and functionality of the system. With this, I have started posting calls or people that have stopped in my office with questions and any conversation that has had with them is now logged into the system along with times that I am active during severe weather within the area. Thursday, May 2nd, I attended cybersecurity training session in Hayes and learned potential cyber threats that can attack the security of our community and facilities within the community. The need for cybersecurity has greatly risen and this is an ongoing battle and I think the IT contract that Lincoln County currently has in place is a very good contract. Monday, May 6th, I was asked to come back, come to speak to the Sylvan Grove City Council about the need for the ICS structure and the CRMCS system for tracking people and resources within Lincoln County. I gave the council paperwork to complete and asked the city clerk to take a photo in front of a white background and forward me the information once completed by the council members. Later that evening, from 21:50 to 22:39, Lincoln County was placed in a severe thunderstorm warning and I requested to have storm spotters, Sylvan Hunter area activated and this was a quick-moving storm that ran through Lincoln County. May 13th, I was asked to come before the Sylvan, excuse me, the Lincoln City Council about the need for the ICS structure and the CRMCS system, again, gave them that same information. Tuesday, May 14th, I attended the North Central Kansas Ancillary Healthcare Preparedness Summit in Salina. I've attached a copy of the learning sessions that were available on the back of this year attachment.
Hey, David, you don't need to read all these. We got, I guess, a good status report. I appreciate you for doing it.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, if the public wants a copy of David's status report, we would have it on record.
Yes.
But very good, David, no, that's good. And also now you're, you are gonna go attend this commu, this down in, uh.
Texas.
Texas, who are coming up here in the next week or two.
Yes, sir. Um, again, myself and, and the Public Works Director are going to be attending training coming up June 17th through the 21st.
Okay.
And I'm requesting to be allowed to put my meals and long-term parking, or excuse me, short-term parking on my county credit card as an expense. Um, when I've gone to Colorado, you've previously allowed me to do my meals on the card. Uh, we fly out of Wichita at 10:50 on the 17th and we get back from, from College Station, Texas about 8 o'clock that night is when we're expected to fly into Wichita.
What night are you coming back?
Friday, the 21st.
Oh, Friday, 21st, okay.
Class gets out about 10:30 and then travel time from College Station.
All right. We approved that previously, right, all that?
He's asking if he can use the card.
My county credit card.
And then, Don, do you pay the bill out of his account when that comes in? Is that, does that work okay for you? Okay, that's fine. We don't need, we don't need a motion for that.
We don't need, just go ahead.
Okay, okay.
As long as Don knows that and she's gonna pay through your, through your budget.
Right, right.
Where are we with your budget? I thought there were maybe some concerns with this year already just not being on target.
Again, I'm with the budget right now because of my hazardous mitigation grant that I had applied for in the.
What was that amount?
20,000, and again, I'm in the process of getting reimbursed by the state. I just need to finish.
We're just still waiting on that?
Yes, yes, yes.
But you're sure that's coming?
I, I'm more sure, more sure of that than I am my EMPG money.
Which is?
The Emergency Performance Grant from last year, 77,000. And again, I'm supposed to have that, I was told in an email June 7th, that it should be in my account by the middle of July.
Well, that's coming.
Please keep us updated on that because that's gonna very much affect what we do with our budget.
Right, right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if it pleases everyone, I'm gonna ask for a 15-minute recess. He is done now and we have, um, the highway department scheduled, I'm sorry, Mr. Zacco?
Me?
Oh.
I'm Dennis Ray.
Dennis Ray.
Oh, Mr. Ray, I'm sorry.
That's not Zacco, Dennis Ray. Do you have something to say, Dennis? You want to speak?
No, I'm just observing.
Just observing?
Just spending some time.
Okay, very good.
Quality time.
Very good.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you. I thought you were someone else. So if we're good for 15 minutes?
Fine with me.
Because Michael will be here at 11.
Michael O'Hare, we plan on having Mr. O'Hare here at 11.
Recess for 15.
Thought that he could be back.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to go here. Yeah, I emailed, you know, Mr. Grace, if he could visit with us. And, uh, he said he could come to 17th, which is the week from today. Uh, if we would meet with us and I, I didn't know what we have for schedule for next week.
Do you have anything on there yet for the 17th agenda? Let's just.
Well, yeah, we don't have to know, we don't have to know right now. He just said, Mr. Grace just said he could probably meet with us next week, 17th. We didn't say what time or.
Let's do a half an hour.
Or if we would go executive order-ish or that session. So yeah, but if, see what, if we, but he was, so I was just seeing what you would want to do.
Let's do a half an hour next week, just put him in wherever you want, Don, and.
A half hour, you think's enough?
Yeah.
I don't know, we got a lot of bit of stuff, right, but maybe longer?
Well.
I don't think we have anything on there yet.
Well, maybe we'll, maybe we, we can start with a half hour, then we can always go.
I guess I'm just thinking we can, we can, we can have a discussion. We don't necessarily have a way to come to a conclusion, but.
We could kind of get opinion where we're standing.
Yeah, yeah.
And go from that. A half hour would be good, huh? Yeah, next week's half hour and I'll get back with him and tell him that's be fine.
Okay.
If we, if we would, if you could put in a time slot, I could tell him what time, you know.
Do you do that during executive session?
Well, we maybe would.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, but we might want to discuss some things in executive session because we get into negotiations possibly of.
The only thing that would, the only thing that would be eligible to go into executive session would be financial information or I guess it would be, uh.
Well, we have a contract with the lease.
Yeah, what is the, um.
The lease.
Okay, trade secret, it's, it's called Trade Secrets of Corporations, Partnerships and Trust. So if there was any financial information that he wanted to disclose to us, he has the ability to request an executive session to not disclose it in the public session. But other than that, as far as our plans, what the commission's going to be doing with the nursing home, that's not executive session material, it would only be if he wanted to reveal some sort of financial information that we are not permitted to share and that he doesn't wish to share. Does that make sense?
So we may do both. We may have a public session and then go in executive session too, based on what he wants to do if it comes down to that. Okay, so we don't know yet for sure.
But everything in the existing contract is available.
Correct, correct, yes. Anything that's happening now is already available to the public and should not be closed.
Yeah.
We're ready.
We're ready, Mike, you ready?
Morning.
Good morning.
I mentioned last week about, uh, seeing what it might take to be able to get some dirt off the county property in which Wenda Solder is leasing. He said that whatever we decide, he would be fine with. He'd just like to know a little bit in advance. Uh, currently, he does not have any crop planted on that. And from my estimations, it looked like if we squared that off with the corner of the one fence, it'd be about five acres that would be taken out of production for him.
And then he would, we pays us a lease now, so much for the land?
I believe that's how it works, so much an acre.
So we would deduct that much.
Shining acres.
And somebody could measure, we could probably, or. Alexis, when last Thursday, we, uh, we had, you were on the phone and hung up. After that, Michael came in, we discussed things and he's looking for dirt, actually did for a lot of places, a cave-in like in Wilson up there where he needs real good dirt to refill places and stuff.
Large quantities.
Yeah, and he was like talking about the, uh, the landfill.
Where you're gonna start a third cell?
Where we.
Well, not necessarily where the third cell would be because we.
Farm, farm ground probably, which is not into the.
It would be on the backside of where the current cells are at on what's farm ground.
Yeah, would it be part of the, what, tanners?
Yes, it would be part of.
Part of that dirt?
Yeah, I guess, I, okay, so it wouldn't be the third cell going from what would be north. north to south?
Correct.
But maybe across, to the west?
To the west.
Yeah, yeah. Which would eventually become a cell.
Eventually, yes.
Okay.
You know, and...
And that's the plan, that was the plan that we just talked about.
The exact location isn't necessarily going to be right, potentially, but, you know, we're needing someplace that we can get some dirt, you know? I don't think you guys moved on having them go ahead and plot that completely out yet, but...
I think he was going to.
But he brought...
He approved what he brought for the drawing.
He got the drawing, design, and I don't know, did we approve the whole plan?
It had, like, so, so many cells, I can't remember. We only have the second building.
I'll have to check back.
Yeah, we'll have to check with him to see how far along we are in that process.
Yep.
Otherwise, it's fine. He needs some dirt, real good dirt, not, not just rocks and...
Has anyone shown you the picture of the bank along, uh...
The old Hillman Bridge?
Yes.
Yes, that is a huge, that's one place that we're needing this dirt for.
It's huge.
Okay.
You know, you could park three, four motor graders in that.
Enough of Wilson Lake, he was saying to that one bridge, uh...
You know, at the lake...
Or that one road, that one road.
Yeah, the lake, that, you know, that's, I got them on the agenda for the 24th, the Hillman Association, I believe they're going to meet with us on the 24th.
Is that a county road, or is that private property road?
That's what we're trying to determine.
Well, we need to determine that, because if it's...
Yes.
Their road, and they do it on their private property, well, they're no handling responsibility. Now, they could, they could say maybe, now that all these public houses are up there, that'd be taxed.
And I didn't bring that information with me.
Well, we need to...
You know, at one time, it was plotted out.
Yeah, we need to determine...
And dedicated, but, you know, I'm not finding...
We need to determine that, for one thing.
Yeah.
And a, okay. And, uh, any other, what other issues you, otherwise, that dirt, I think, we'd find with me, do we need a motion to do that, or use that dirt?
Probably, since you're doing a change in a lease over it, maybe I would...
We maybe...
It's a lease.
Well, Wendell, Wendell Solder cash rests the farm ground.
Oh, all around the pit?
And we're actually going to, yeah, the south of there, we're actually going to take, say, five acres out of farming.
So, do you have the lease? I don't know. I've never seen that.
Me neither.
Okay, could you bring that to the table?
Next time. What we need to do is, we, in other words, right now, we're giving it preliminary, go ahead and do it, but we probably need to make a motion.
Well, yeah, he needs, if he's leasing it, then he has, he has rights to it until...
But he, he talked to Michael.
Yeah, I've visited with Wendell.
Yeah, he said he'd be okay with him.
But I still think we need to do it on paper.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to not do it on paper.
Exactly. We need to modify, we need to modify the lease.
Right. He needs to agree.
For this year, or whatever, that we're taking five acres out of there, whatever, approximately.
Yeah.
That he will pay the last per, that much per acre. That way, everything's in writing.
Yes.
And then we'll make a motion on that. Then you can officially go ahead and get your dirt.
Okay. And then, on Bison Drive between 40th and 50th, 50th, where Mr. Gull was questioning about building a house, that is 60-foot right away.
So, we have room?
We have room, yes.
And I drove it just to look at it. I don't think it's too bad.
It's real sandy, there's absolutely nothing for base there. I don't know how we're going to address that issue.
What do you think's under there? Nothing?
Sand, for quite a ways. It's just blow sand and...
So, I was actually talking to some people, and where 50th comes south from 181, it's just sand for a long portion on that road, and the people that drive there said that it's been fine, even with all this last rain.
Well, it's a different sand, though. We get that sand just west of there, about a mile out of the sand pit. You know, it's got more aggregate and some clay and stuff with it, but there, on that road, it's mainly just blow sand, like sugar sand.
So, it won't have no stability at all?
It moves a lot.
So, what would you suggest?
Me? Well, he, he wanted gravel, grab the gravel.
I think there's going to be approximately half to three-quarters of a mile there.
Well, you're saying if we gravel that, that won't help nothing, because you've got that sand base.
It's going to be interesting to see how it acts.
Is it all sand, or a whole to half mile?
Not all of it.
But one, one drawl over?
Through, through a couple of hills that are...
Well, the other thing is, I noticed along the ditch portion, it's pretty well-filled in. I mean, the shoulders need, it needs reading.
And that's one thing with that sand, after a good rain, the stuff just washes out, and it'll seal it right back in after one or two rains.
No stable structures there.
But without there being any way for any of the water to actually drain, I mean, a lot of it is just too, there isn't enough ditch there at all, from what I saw. And I can understand they've let that go, because it's not highly traveled, but I really personally don't think it's out of line for someone to go a half a mile in. I mean, we're, it's a new home on the tax base, is how I'm looking at it, but, again, this brings us back to that resolution issue that we've...
Well, I'm not against, if, if we, but if we can, I'm not against gravel, yeah, because I agree too, you're a taxpayer, and it's not that far, half mile, right?
It's slightly over.
But, but if he, maybe we should just gravel it and put it on that sand and see what happens.
I think we need to do some road prep. Would that be...
Oh, it definitely will be.
Well, yeah, that's part of it.
But I mean, even before we determine what material, because...
I think, yeah, that would probably be a smart thing to do. You know, it definitely needs widened out, like a true 60-foot right away maybe, because it's maintained more as a 40-foot right away, and make sure that none of the fences ever got set on a 40-foot.
What did you put on the road that goes north and south between there and the next house? There, that was the route around where you put the, where the highway department put the new culvert in? Remember when you closed off the 6th and...
I can't remember for sure where that came from.
That is working wonderfully, whatever that is, because I drove on that road to get back around. I came off of the highway straight west, then I went back north between...
That could have been material right there out of the sand pit, more than likely.
It was, yeah, it's very fine. It's really not great gravel, but as far as, as far as making a road surface, it is not damaged at all from all that rain.
Like, some of those hills, you get some of that sandy, sand rock stuff, a lot of that's pretty stable, even after a big rain. It seems like it's...
If it has proper drainage...
It's a sand wa, it's like a sand rock combination, that red rock sand stuff, that stuff's pretty stable in places. And I know if it washes through there, it'll wash it out easily.
Was that north and south road that we, that you used as a detour, was that dirt before?
I believe that small portion. See, the wind towers has asphalt millings on some of that.
But I think that's on the west, western east road, because the wind tower is on...
East, west, and then it comes back southwards, and then we filled in the gap on the more south stretch with...
Okay, so they did have some on there already?
I believe so.
Okay.
They came down to one entrance, if I recall, but...
Okay. Regardless, it's still in good shape after all of that, and I think that if you did, what pit would that be?
Alm.
That may be worth looking into.
Well, that would be our first choice if we, if it would work, because it's nice and close there. You know, it would be a two-miles round trip.
I really don't think this is a timing priority thing. I mean, we, we could approve it, and then, it doesn't, I mean, I know you, there are a lot of other projects that are...
Well, you've got a lot of projects going on with all the problems in the county.
Right.
But we could, I don't know if we want to prove it now, we could, I'm not against it, but you could do it later, you know, later on a list of stuff to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, months from now.
Would that be the route that currently Bobby Zacco is doing, or is that...
Yes.
Because I think he would be very good at doing that prep work, the shoulder work and the ditch work, it seems. I mean, he's done a nice job reshaping some things that I've seen where I drive a lot.
Yep. So, we'll see about getting that reshaped here sometime this spring if we can, actually it'll be summer.
So, how far do you do? How long is that? Half mile, you said, or something?
It's slightly over.
If we're going to go in and do it, we'll do the whole mile while we're there.
You'll do the whole mile?
Yeah.
You're going to go past the driveway?
When we rebuild it, yes.
Oh, oh, but not with the...
It'll benefit us, no.
Yeah, okay, I see. That's fine.
You know, and that may be something we look at down the road, though. If we can, if it will stay solid and stable, is go ahead and sand it all the way back to the sand pit, that way we can get in and out of there quicker after...
Does that road continue on to that pit?
Yes. It's just like one mile straight west of there.
And have you been pulling any sand out of there?
Oh, yeah. That's probably one of the main pits we've used this year.
Okay.
Just for the mere fact that, you know, the pile drains.
Do you want that sand and some of that clay stuff, like, give you trouble about?
Yes.
Good, that's a binder, that's a good binder with that same clay. Yeah, good.
And you can put it on a road by itself, too.
Have you been back to check Union, where the Union to 50th project was a couple, a month ago or so?
Union of 50th.
In other words, where there was a complaint about the plane being out there?
From the Zacco pit.
Oh, I, I haven't been back there, no. I haven't all been. I know that we've done some...
I mean, now that the rain is...
Remediation there, and we got some work to do up around on the Snyder Road yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
If you can get some of that sand, maybe it has all some of that sand in there on Snyder's or that road.
That's what I was wondering.
Because that sand, I know, sand is soft, but it does bind with that clay and makes it a bit stable. And it's a cheap, cheap, which we have it, it's cheap, cheaper than a gummy corn side, obviously.
Are we paying for the sand what we pay for the gravel? Was that part of the...
Yes.
Two bucks a yard, ton, yard, whatever.
Cubic yard.
Cubic yard, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Could I also get you to check Pike between 60th and 70th Road?
On Pike?
Pike, try Pike, be careful when you go. You don't need a four-wheel driver, you won't even get through.
Okay. Hold on. When you do do that road, how many yards do you, approximate would do that, to, on Yule, would do that, what's that, Bison now, road you said?
Yeah.
Uh, just approximate number to do that mile?
Now, if we put it to a 24-foot road width, it'll be about a little less than 1,600 cubic yards a mile. So, if we're only doing that...
1,600, so...
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred approximately if we're doing a half mile.
And that's times two bucks?
But that's for a what? Like a, is that for a one-inch roadstone kind of thing, or...
Uh, no, that would be four inch. But if we put pure sand out of there on there, we'll probably be able to back that down to a three.
Then are you going to put gravel on that?
No.
What are you going to put on there, roadstone?
No, if we use...
I was just asking about what material.
Just the sand out of that pit.
Yeah.
We typically don't put it on quite as thick, because if you do, you end up getting that washboard or something.
Well, you're going to use sand, just use sand totally, and that will gravel it all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what's under there.
Oh, that's fine, I just didn't know what your process was. Well, that's, that's, that ain't that expensive then. You said eight...
Eight hundred.
Six to eight hundred cubic yards.
Times three.
So, times two is...
For two.
Two bucks a yard, right?
Yeah.
That's like 1,600, $1,000, material-wise.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have more invested in reshaping.
Well, sure, you got reshaping, and you guys are working, you guys are working anyway. You know, we're not paying to do that road, we're paying to do something else. It ain't like that's extra money for labor, and we're paying it anyway. I'll make a motion to, uh, what...
Start preparing.
To prepare that road.
Get it's Bison.
Or, according Yule, uh, facility.
Do you guys, uh...
Is that, are we ready to make a motion? Maybe if they're not...
I know that, before you make a motion, I guess I'll make a comment that in years past, they have said that they wanted to see true building attempts made prior to doing that.
And they haven't done that yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, maybe we better...
Just for the mere fact that, you know, that maybe it's just perceived that they're going to do it now, and then they can't follow through, or something like that.
Since we're not making a purchase, I'm going to suggest that we give board approval to begin preparation, because there's no reason that he can't dig up those ditches regardless. I mean, if we're using that to access the pit, it's good practice to keep it draining well.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah.
And the, and the ditches are very silted in, and it's probably, like you said, because of the material, so there wouldn't be any harm in having him, whoever the operator is at the time...
Yeah, prep the road.
Go ahead and know that that's, know that that's the plan.
And maybe we should get with Mr. Yule to make sure he is building this place before we put-
My, my biggest concern-
I believe it's already been purchased, from what I understand, so-
The property, I believe, has.
And I'm saying, I, they haven't broken ground, but-
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. So we don't need to put any material down until that happens.
What scares me the most is that we won't be able to get a base out of it all, and then we'll have to potentially excavate all of that and then bring in dirt.
But honestly, driving on there, you know, I expected dirt where you sink in is what I was expecting, and that is not what is going on there. I mean, it was, I was just there a few days ago.
At the east end, it's more dirt, but then you get over the hill and it turns into that blow sand.
Mm-hmm. But I'm saying, I, I would expect that if it was going to be, if it was not going to hold itself as a base as we put something on top, I mean, we can add gravel to it, you can haul from the gravel pits with the sand and go ahead and blend while you're actually putting it down. Especially in the parts that you think are weaker, as far as-
There a gravel pit down there too, or do you always go back to that, thatko pit?
Oh, no, we-
There's the Wolf Creek.
Thatko pit, yeah.
Wolf Creek would probably be our closest to that one.
Is it better quality gravel?
Wasn't there a bad pit, or we don't have any one?
Uh, we have, actually, we have a little bit of material still left in there, um, but we do have that closed with rights to enter to remove the remaining pile, we've got it all reclaimed with just a pile.
How much is there, do you know?
Oh. Probably not enough to do a full half-mile, I don't think, maybe.
But what about mixing it with the sand?
Well, we could, you know, I don't-
That might be a good use for that material. And not let it sit there too long.
Yeah. Well, maybe we should hold off, like you said, before we make a motion to them, so what do you think, what do you think?
I think since we're not making a purchase, or we're not, we're not really spend, spending material for, you know, money.
Okay, okay.
I think we could just give him board approval to begin prep, which means whoever the operator is there should start looking at how they're going to blow up this.
If we even fix up that road, that won't hurt nothing, even if they did build a house, because we went to that.
Because the pit is there, how, or is that sand pit have some longevity into the future, or are we, are we about used up with? I mean, I have no idea how long that's been there, or how, how much we think it did.
Ever since I've been here, we've been using it.
There's a lot in there, yeah, is the estate?
I think there's other areas.
Around there, huh?
Yeah, I think we've still got quite a bit left where we're at. I know that we were in a pit-
Did they renew a three-year, or what did they, did they renew?
I can't remember, one or two years.
We were doing up to three, right?
Yes.
That's fine with me, we can just, whatever, I'm not against this here, I just don't know the best procedure to go ahead with it, okay? What do you think, Michael, what do you think, what do you think?
I think number one, we just need to reshape the road and see what it's gonna act like.
That sounds good.
If, if it's, if it's just pure blow sand, you know, even if we put, uh, material on top of it, it's just gonna push out and blow.
We're gonna, as we work to the shoulders, we're going to see what happens to the surface, and I can say-
It'll stay wise somewhat, and it, you know.
Could.
There's probably rock in that sand. Hard to say.
Waves down, I don't know.
I agree with you.
I, I don't think it's that soft, because like I said, if it was, after all that rain, driving on it, there were literally no ruts. I mean, and it hadn't been just-
The sand actually sheds water pretty good, of course, like you said, the sand will actually wash away too, you know. Whatever, what do you want to do, make a motion to do this?
No, I think, Dawn, did you take a note that we gave board approval for preparation on bison?
And a Randy woman moved to prepare the river for, oh, Yule.
Cory.
Or Cory Yule, sorry, so we need to, I guess-
Would you bison drive?
How that motion dies?
Yes, please.
Yeah, that motion dies.
Motion dies for lack of second.
And then you say the board approves?
I'm literally laughing, because you have no idea how many motions I've had done for one of these.
What's that, die for lack of second?
Yeah. It's just funny that it's attached to your name. So, how about, um, the board gives approval for road preparation work on bison?
Bison, what, with bison, where, what between?
Between one-
Forty-fifth and fiftieth, bison, okay. Okay, sorry.
Would it be okay if I just identified the law number, and then I say, oh, and there's, it's forty-three?
Yeah, or, or, or from there to the pit, aren't you, I mean, you're expecting him to continue the shoulder work all the way to the pit entrance?
Well, we could, while we're there, be additional half-mile beyond that mile or so.
I mean, you can, you can relate that to him, but-
Right there, that's way down there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the last road before the county line.
That's it. Okay. Michael, I had a few, uh, farmers were saying, in that bottom road, you know, on, on the other side of the river, which is what, Jaguar? People wondered if that bottom road could be open for like harvest coming out, you know, by Rocky Hill Road.
Uh, we'll try.
Yeah.
When it dries out that we can get in there and do anything, I mean, we got sil- three to four inches CD.
I know it's silted up, I know we got issues, but if we could get that temporarily, at least like for-
Yeah.
I know it has been raining again another two inches, but, you know, but if we can get in there, just like for special harvest and, uh, and farming now and planting, uh, we sure appreciate that.
Yeah, we're trying.
Some people were saying one-fiftieth out of west was, is closed, uh, by just south of, uh, Eighteenth Highway going to one-fiftieth, right?
Uh, yeah, I think that is, uh, there by the old Spillman Bridge.
Yeah, the old Spillman Bridge.
Yes, we, uh-
What's the problem there?
The road has actually started sliding into the Spillman Creek. So, soil stability issue there.
Okay. Well, some people are wanting to see if that could be opened, and I know you're saying because of your danger, huh, of somebody wrecking a vehicle or something.
Not necessarily wrecking, you know, my concern is somebody be traveling on it and it actually slides away while they're traveling.
Because they're wanting, people wanting to have that open, farming again. Uh, I'm just telling you what they're wanting.
Yep.
Now, I don't know, maybe we could open it if-
Uh, we can't open it the way it is.
No, I don't determine whether it's a safety risk or not, you know.
Uh, I, something like that, I can make that determination.
What is that, one-fiftieth?
Yeah, it's that road that goes to, well, by the Spillman Bridge.
Rick McBride's, north of Rick McBride's.
But it's pretty well drought, I mean, is that-
But north of Rick McBride's and Wally Sheldon, them guys farm there.
There's a couple farmers.
Yeah, those guys farm right through there and-
How far, how long of a section is closed?
Oh, probably a hundred yards.
It's like, where's one-fiftieth?
There's probably a hundred and fifty feet of damage, but we got it closed.
It's right near eighteen, it's, it's right routing right in here, right there's a river.
Okay.
There's a spill that comes in there, it's right about right there.
Oh, right off of the highway?
Right off, yes, about a quarter-
Half mile south.
Half mile south, or quarter mile south of eighteen.
Because it doesn't go straight into the highway.
Because those guys move through here, they're farming all of this.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a, I know, again, again, I know that's a safety thing, but they'd like to have it open, so I don't know, I tell you.
You know, I can't be there to police them if they go around a barricade, so.
Well, okay.
Um, we can look, have you looked at it?
But, but we've had complaints that a lot of roads are closed, and you could probably say justifiably so, because of safety issues and what-
It is, you know.
One another, but some of these guys are saying, we don't care, we'll drive through the issue, you know? They don't want to drive around a section when they gotta-
But what happens when they tear up their vehicle?
I know.
Or they're suing us, or they're violating insurance.
Damaging barricades, they've been damaging a lot of barricades, just been hitting them and had some stolen even, and you know, we, we, we can't allow them to go through there, you know, when we close it, we're covering our tails when we do that.
But they're saying that-
If, if they choose to drive around it and they have an accident, that's a violation there and they can be wrote up for it, so.
Okay, well-
You know, that, that's all I can say.
A lot of them are saying they don't think the road is that bad and they'd still like to go on. Yeah, I know, that's, you, you, you can decide that, because you're the guy, but-
I'm trying to prevent somebody getting in trouble, or the county getting in trouble.
I know. But, uh, okay.
I'm gonna bring up, um, on one-twentieth, there was a stop sign that was down, and then, I don't know who put it back up.
Okay.
It was, it's at iron, I believe.
One-twentieth in iron?
Yeah, but that, it's supposed to be, it's kind, the stop-
Oh, it's got sideways, it has to be straightened out.
Yeah, but it's into, it's stopping, like, to the field.
Well, it got twisted in there.
But I mean, it was put in, so it needs to be, maybe it wasn't solidified and not, but it's kinda-
Is that on a steel post?
Yeah, a white, a white, well, it looks, I didn't look at it.
It's metal.
It's metal?
Metal. Yeah, something hit it and twisted it probably, but.
And there's also some signs down by Jerry Osterman.
Okay.
You know, when you go around that curve? There's one down there, and there's also one that curves when you go back to the west.
North of Jerry's?
Yeah.
A sign missing, or twisted, or down, or?
It's missing.
Oh, missing.
I don't know whether somebody knocked it down and put it.
Did you have anything else for us, Michael?
Um, let you know that we're out getting those trees cleared up down the El Cora.
Okay, yeah, I drove by there, somebody was calling complaining, I drove by there, and they wasn't that bad. You had them pushed all the way anyway, you could get through there, the way it sounded like they were closing the whole road.
No.
They pushed them out, you guys did, so, yeah, well, they, you could get through there, no, that's, yeah, I'll get you clean much today.
Um-
And I don't know, you know, I know you guys are on this four-day work week and you probably like it, but I don't know, you know, I don't know next year if I would be for it, because like Friday and Saturday were beautiful days, and I know we can't pick and choose when it rains and when it doesn't and all this and that. Now, today, when it rained for Saturday night, yesterday morning, two inch and a half, two inches, and I don't know if your guys would probably not be able to go out in the road today, because it's too muddy, probably, right?
We're able to get on the gravel roads.
Because-
By tomorrow, we should be able to get on some of the dirt roads.
I'm just saying, next year, I don't think I'll do this, I'll be voting for this, because, because five days gives us one more day to be out there. And I know you could say, I wanna work ten hours shifts, because when you're out there, that gives you more in one day you can do stuff with, I understand that. But like Friday was a beautiful day and you guys are off, and that's, we made that rule, I'm not blaming you guys, and Saturday too. And then it rains and now like, then when you get a Monday and Tuesday, it's gonna be muddy. I don't know what you guys, I'm not blaming nobody or nothing, I'm just saying, you can't get out to do your job because of the weather. But so that four-day work shift, if it rains, well, Wednesday, you guys can't do that on Wednesday, Thursday, and that's not your problem again, but it, but it it cuts our work, or the business down for our county, you know what I'm saying? In other words, if we have five days on each-
There's also another issue to that, if I may add.
Yeah, go ahead.
So then the office is closed on Fridays now, and I, we were actually in session on a Friday, and I said, oh, I'll just call over and ask to the highway department, and Dawn said, well, it's Friday. So, not being able to contact the office on Fridays and rerouting all the phone calls through the clerk's office, uh, not being able to take advantage of a nice weather Friday, you know, I'm not against a ten-hour shift, but there, there could be a compromise where you have a, a crew that does Monday to Thursday and Tuesday to Friday, or something of that nature, um, if you want the ten hours. I, especially for the jobs where you're saying, they start up their vehicle, they let it warm up, their piece of equipment, they let it warm up. By the time they drive to the site, if they know they're working five miles away, you know, there goes an hour of your day, I get it. There, there's a lot of wasted time in the travel and the downtime in the beginning and the end of the day, so I understand the, the want for that. But it's also another thing, you know, to not have mechanics in the shop on Fridays, if we're not using that piece of equipment, couldn't it be getting serviced on a Friday when you know that the operator is, I mean, there's a, I think there's a little bit more to having a, a shifting schedule rather than just close everything down for three days over the weekend, um.
Well, especially when we've had all this bad weather, you have a lot of work, you told me, we have ditches and washouts and a lot of work, you know that, and but then we take three days off, and when it's beautiful, Friday, Saturday, we, we're not there when we should be, or could not Saturday necessarily, but and, and I know we approved that, I'm not blaming you, Michael, none of this, I'm just saying, next year, when we have five-day schedule, at least we got one more day where we hopefully maybe won't be raining, where we can work on this stuff. If we have beautiful weather all the time, then a four-days, ten-hour shift would be okay.
Yep.
But I'm just saying, you know, we wanna get the work done, and, uh, I know you always have to deal with the weather, obviously. And if we've had these floods, that's caused a lot of damage, or lots of injuries, do you?
So I'm kinda wondering about a little bit of the rearranging that you did, um, do you have two mechanics that are full-time assigned to the shop?
Yes.
And that's Mr. Wollting and?
Colton Penner.
Colton Penner.
Okay, and then, so I know we had moved, or you had moved, uh, Mr. Fredrick in there right now as well, is that, how's that working out? Is that beneficial to have that?
Well, he's doing something that's probably needed done for a while, as far as going through our parts room that's got stuff from the forties and stuff that's just never been dealt with, but-
Cleaning it up, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fun.
But, you know, that's gonna come to an end soon, so.
Um, so do you think that that is, that's the best structure in there, is to have two full-time in the shop? I mean, are they doing any, are, are either of those shop guys doing any onsite, do they go out and do anything at the outline shops?
We pull them from time to time to go do some road work and whatnot. Lance knows how to operate a motor grader, he used to have a route. Uh, we currently have Colton doing the spray route now, um, so when it's not windy, he's been coming in, running the spray truck, and then when it gets rainy-
Mr. Raina?
Yeah.
From that shop? Yeah, it's good to consolidate, I think that's good, to consolidate, because sometimes maybe, like today, I mean, if it rained like today, it's muddy, I don't know what you guys are doing, but if we can have, have, you know, a schedule to do something on a rainy day.
Is, is the workload too intense in the shop for one person?
You probably need two people.
I mean, I know you might need two people for hands, like lifting, but I'm saying, like, yeah, depending on the day, I mean, how-
But, you know, most of the time, we try to have two around.
How often do you have to call in someone else from their route or from their truck or whatever?
To do mechanic work?
Mm-hmm.
We typically don't.
You don't have to, okay. So two people have been handling it?
Yes.
And that one person is spraying all summer, on top of being in there?
Uh, this year, yes, didn't, wasn't in the past, we had a truck driver doing that, but-
Okay.
Um, yeah, you know, we, we are down to two mechanics, we used to have three mechanics and a full-time fuel and tire guy, which, uh, we've done some changes on that over the years. Uh, we quit running the-
Have there always been ten routes?
Yes, as long as I've been here, yes.
And any, any, I've been asked several times why nobody's mowed yet, not no one, I shouldn't say that, but I've been asked why there hasn't been a lot of mowing, is there feedback on that? Do you, have you been in contact with these ten routes and found out?
Uh, we've been doing quite a bit of mowing, actually, just maybe they haven't seen us out and about. Uh, I do know that we got two tractors in the shop right now that need worked on, one needs parts, one needs service, so we're getting that done. We know, as Lance has time to get that accomplished, uh, if he doesn't get pulled to go do something in the field. Uh, but yeah, we've been utilizing some of the truck drivers to do some mowing, since they're not moving too much material right now, so. Yeah, we only have five movers, so.
Right, it's shared between different routes, okay. Okay.
But one of my questions was, would you guys mind if we do work on a Friday or Saturday, here to help get caught up prior to harvest and-
You mean as an overtime basis, totally?
Yeah.
So you still work four hours, four days a week, uh, ten hours, four days a week?
Hopefully it quits raining and we don't have to utilize the whole bunch.
And then you would work Friday and maybe Saturday too, all overtime hours?
Well- Some of the guys, you know, it's not like we're gonna call absolutely everybody in, we'll try to at least get some of the
If you could get-
The routes caught up, I know we got a lot of dirt roads that need to get caught up.
Is this for, is this like blade operators?
Mainly for the blade operators, yes.
Yeah, I think that'd be for that, because, uh, well, I was one-
Right now's the time to do it, while it's still soft and malleable.
And I was wondering too, if you have a rainy day, I mean, say like, say last night it rained two inches instead of Saturday morning, and say you get on the gravel roads now, but say it's super muddy, and half those, some of them guys cannot get out there. I could see them just not coming in that day, and then maybe work Friday and still get the regular, maybe they don't wanna do that. In other words, a, a modified shift, if they can't, and I know, if you're a grader driver and it's, if you have three inches of rain, you can't get out there. Why not not come in that day, say it's Tuesday, just don't come in, then come in Friday, in other words, get your, your pay, that, and, and, you know, but of course, Friday, I guarantee you it wouldn't be rainy too, I know, it'd be tough.
Yeah, you know, and when a person-
In other words, I'd say modify your schedule.
If a person's already made plans for-
Friday, Saturday, the weekend, I know.
Whatever, you know, it's, yeah, I don't know.
So what do you think about it?
I, I have mixed feelings about this, because one, I understand it's a perk of the job, many of the guys that have worked here have enjoyed knowing that they're going to have a four-day work week throughout the summer, and it, it gives them time to plan other things, do other things.
Well, you get a three-day weekend every week, that's a great perk.
Right, I, yeah, it is a perk.
But, but when we need them here, when we need them, people here to do the job, because we have, this is a seasonal year, we've had all this moisture, you've had washouts, you got stuff, I know that, you know, you've talked about the problems, I know it, well, then it'd be nice almost to not have them, you know, if you go to APAC Shears and that, if they're busy, them guys are working Fridays and they're working ten hours every day, well, they might be working sixty hours a week, because they need to work, because the business is there. The private sector, they got, they work when it works, needing to be done, you know, seems like county can't do something like that, or everybody gets upset.
Well, let's say, you know, the average of thirteen dollars an hour for time and a half, that's, now we're paying out nineteen fifty an hour for ten people, which is a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour for overtime.
But I don't know if we'd have to have all ten people out.
I'm just saying, like, just to give some round numbers, you know, I'd rather give them a raise than, than have to re-accommodate with overtime.
But overtime's only temporary, like, we might only do it once or twice, a Friday or Saturday, and then you're done. You give them a raise, that's, and then we still wouldn't have a problem not coming in on Friday or Saturday. I'm for next year, I think I'll just vote for, uh, eight-hour shifts, Monday to Friday, because of this problem, like Fridays, nobody's there, and now on Monday, we can't do, get out there because of the weather.
Well, and if it, if it rains on a Wednesday, then you have Wednesday and Thursday that you can't, then if Friday is nice again, then everything's wait, sitting and waiting until Monday, um.
But how's the budget look, if we give you guys overtime, would you, how would that affect your budget, do you have, have you looked at that?
Oh, it should be good, since I haven't, I haven't looked at it directly recently, we've been short employee for-
Well, I could see temporarily right now, with all the work going on, I would think we should do some overtime.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm here to-
I would give four Friday and Saturday, for key employees, that need to be there, not everybody, key employees that you think, you need to do special jobs at the right time, and try to limit it only key employees, in other words, try to save us money as much as you can, but be able to do the job you need to get done, okay? If you need three or four guys that are real critical-
I felt like the, I felt like the use of the overtime this past winter was very appropriate, you know, at least where I live. I mean, everything was taken care of, and I didn't feel like it was overly expensive, it was well done.
And unfortunate.
And it doesn't get abused, you know?
Right, if it doesn't get abused, right.
Honestly, if you guys don't wanna be at work, they don't have to be, so.
Exactly, but like Friday and Saturday, I think we should do that, don't you do?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm for approving overtime now, but you're right, it brings up the discussion about the four-day work week and what other options there are to make sure that it's more accommodating to our customers.
What do you think, what do you think, Michael, what Alexa said, next year, not maybe now, but if we do this ten-hour work day, four days a week, we bring half your crew coming in Monday to Friday, Thursday, and maybe the other half Tuesday to Friday, that way we're covered in five days, and you guys still get your ten-hour days overall. Ten-hour shift, a four-day work week overall. Could you work half shift, four days, first four, would that work?
I see it as being pretty difficult, you know, if you're, you're hauling gravel, you know, who's gonna stay home and what's not gonna get done on the other day, you know? If you got your truck drivers.
Well, can't you get, same, similar group of grader drivers and truck drivers and, and, uh, bridge guys, half of them, you got, you got half of them, can you work Monday to Thursday, and half of them work Tuesday, Friday?
Well, some of it depends on each other, you know, like for hauling gravel, you know, you got a loader operator, so there's gonna be one day that you don't have your loader operator.
You only have one loader operator, you don't have two?
Well, other people know how to do it, but you're gonna be pulling somebody from doing what they normally do to fill in, to fill that job.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, it's, in other words, you don't have a full crew where you could have two shifts.
You know, at the end of the day, you're only gonna have three days out of the week when you have everybody there, and then you're gonna have two days where you only have what I'm gonna call skeleton crew, well, not even that, you're gonna have half your employees there for a day.
Well, it's a problem, it can just go back to Monday to Friday, so, those are the options.
Yeah.
But I think we should do overtime now, do we need to make a motion for that?
No.
Just tell you-
I think just board approval for current overtime on-
Board approval, Friday, Saturday, Michael, as a key employees that you think you need for those, okay? And then-
Well, I'm dealing with this flooding and flood cleanup and remediating some of our locations, and I'm still looking into pricing on an excavator, is that something that you guys are gonna take seriously, you think? Or should I start now on getting a contractor lined out to do the work that we're gonna need an excavator for?
For which project?
Uh, we're gonna have at least two low-water crossings down, uh, off of one-twentieth, or two-twentieth.
Is that the one that Mr. Bell came in about, or?
Is that the one, the Rocky Hill one, by the Fasky about, on Jaguar?
Now, that one, we could probably get away without an excavator, but the two south of that, yes, they usually always get big log jams in them.
Right.
And they have them again.
Right now, you rent somebody or hire somebody, at least?
We've been, we've been hiring, putting it up in bids to local contractors and-
I think-
How much did that cost?
Oh, goodness.
How much an hour?
Does that come with a, with an operator, or is that just to-
Yeah, no, they do the work.
Okay.
He's been lump summing it, and it's, just on those two crossings down there, I think it's been around five to seven thousand dollars.
Each?
I believe for the pair of them, um, but where we've got these slides and what-
Where does that come out of, who, who's, what company, or where are they coming from?
Uh, I believe Rodney Larson out of Lincoln here has been getting those.
Rodney does it.
And I usually do, uh, what is it, M and D Excavating, or Roy Davies Construction Company, I can't remember.
Roy Davies, yeah, yeah.
Is Rodney Larson, uh, frequently available? Is that someone you've used yearly?
No, he's a local contractor.
I don't know him, but I-
Farmers use him, we use him all the time, farmers do too, to make terraces and waterways, he's got dozers and equipment, graders, and shapes waterways and terraces.
Do you use them multiple times a year, once a year, or how, I, I don't remember this name.
Usually it's just after flooding events. Usually it's just after flooding events, you know?
I don't see a reason why we can't contract this out right now. There needs to be a lot more discussion about the structure of the department before we make that kind of a purchase.
Yeah, this year especially, I would contract it out too, because your excavator would be very expensive, what you were saying, and you would want to get another tool that would go with it maybe to help you on a bridge, right, for pilings?
In due time, yes.
And that would be a lot of money. So right now, I think we don't wanna address that this year, I know.
Not with this, not, not in this current budget, because actually what we've done is we've opened ourselves up a window for purchasing opportunity or for employment opportunity, being that we haven't bought the two new graders that had been purchased habitually yearly before, there's, there's gonna be money sitting there that we can actually make some big decisions with as far as where we're going to invest, what's gonna be most time efficient for us, and for five to seven thousand dollars to get an immediate job taken care of.
Well, that shows these two locations. We've got a lot of locations this year. We could easily spend thirty, forty thousand dollars, time we're all said and done, on a contractor, just using an excavator. That, that was the point I'm getting at, so.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we need to identify all those locations.
And we're working on that, you know, and I guess put it out to bid, see what they're gonna, wanna do.
Put it out to bid, I would now. Maybe we can re-address it later.
Yeah. Who do we, did you find someone that's going to be operating the dozer? I mean, we don't have it, right? It's still in Topeka?
We have one of them backed, yes.
You had one at Foley's, didn't you?
We had one at Foley's and one in Topeka.
Are they backed?
One of them is, and the other one should be close.
Is that one back in the pit now?
No, we just got it back last Thursday.
So what are, what are we doing about an operator?
We had a designated one.
You put him at home, don't you?
No.
He's on a route now, a blade route, I believe?
Oh, okay.
Correct?
Yes.
So who's gonna be the dozer operator?
Sheldon Frederick.
Is he, the one that ran out of the water still at Foley's?
Yes.
Okay.
They're about done with it.
Any idea what's that gonna cost? Or don't know, maybe?
Oh.
Would they have to go through the transmission?
Oh, yeah, they had to go through the transmission. That was, I believe, around forty thousand, last I heard, but insurance has taken care of it, so.
Okay.
It's insured.
And the engine, okay?
Yeah, engine was not a factor.
All right.
Well, that's good news. Is the dozer that you got back able to?
Yes, when it dries out, we can get it in a pit, yes.
Do you think we need training for that doesn't happen again type of thing, or you think that was a once in a, just an accidental thing that happened as a fluke thing? Or is that operator error there?
Um-
And I know, and I'm a tractor driver, a combine driver, and I've run into stuff, and I've done stuff as, you're winning everything.
Accidents happen.
You're gonna make the problems, accidents happen, so I'm not blaming nobody, I'm just saying, we don't wanna do this again, and, no, so we wanna make sure everybody that's operating this stuff really knows what they're doing, and I know they, you know, as best as they can, everybody's different, you know, but we wanna make sure everybody's trained well.
Yeah, you know, and-
And that's the thing, if we-
In that location, we probably won't be able to use a dozer to get gravel anymore, we're just gonna have to use an excavator.
Okay. You can't use that backhoe, like you were saying, and that doesn't work.
That's just not cost-effective.
You're saying because a lot of it's underwater, is that the-
Yes, the, the quality aggregate is submerged underwater, yes.
So is that something, then, that we really need to look at? I mean, while the water table is so high, maybe that's not a worthwhile pit to me.
It's always gonna have water in it, you know, and-
Well, that one is, at that low area, that one, that Zaco pit just lower, you're gonna have like a, some of them, they dig down, you're gonna have very under the water table. He's riding on that, and that's close to that creek over there.
You know, and there, there is very good gravel in there if we can get that other stuff out, you know, proving itself.
Well, maybe we just, I, I really don't wanna, I don't know. If you could, I'm afraid that you're throwing out these big numbers, three hundred thousand dollars and that type of thing, we could get ones for not cheaper, it'd be nice, you know?
Well, if you're just saying it's a matter of excavating what's in there, I mean, that can also be contracted, so that it's then pulled up and filed, and then the county is only going to be loading and distributing it, and we pay, we contract to have it excavated out of the area that we are now leasing, and it's over and done with, and then we're not paying for someone to be there.
I'm not, yeah, and I agree with Alexis, contracting, you get somebody done, you're done with it. You get an excavator, then they got the maintenance of the excavator, and if it blows the engine in there, you know, all, you got that much more capital stuff you have to deal with, then you gotta get an operator. And as I understood it, excavators are complex instruments to operate, aren't they?
We run backhoes and mini excavators already, they're very similar, it's just how it's coupled to the ground. You know, this has got a solid base and on tracks, and you're able to travel up and down some banks and stuff that you can't do on a wheel excavator, so.
I understand that the machinery has its purpose, but we've also been talking about a lack of ability to find enough people to all be doing the projects that we need to be doing, because you're constantly saying that we're undermanned, and then we were talking about if you do do a split shift or something like that, then you're saying you don't have a person, you can just pull from one thing to another. If we don't have some key operators that can maintain functional purpose in multiple machinery pieces, then we need to relook at that situation. If we only have one person that we can stick in there at any given time, that, that inhibits us from being able to do a lot.
Yeah, for now, I would roll off of this excavator, maybe contract, get bids for contract, like Rodney Larson or whatever.
And the only other thing I have is, when I came up here Thursday, was on our fuel contract, we did not have to adhere to what was discussed with Great Bend Co-op. They never did send out any paperwork to get signed off on, on that, and he offered us a better price than what it was contracted at, in which the contract was for two forty-four seventy-two, and I called the three delivery people, Great Bend Co-op, Home Oil, and DNS Service, and the low bid on that transport load of fuel went to DNS at two point zero eight zero zero.
Wow.
Okay.
So we saved roughly twenty-seven hundred gallons.
Did you sign a contract?
I've never signed a contract, no.
He was saying before we made that contract-
They've never sent one to us.
With Home Oil, he never got a contract to deal with, so.
Well, I just, this last month, when we bought fuel, was that gasoline?
Take load of gasoline, yes.
From Home Oil, right, that was Home Oil.
I believe that's where that one came from. I, I still call and get pricing on my gasoline transports too.
One of the issues is, is we went through this contract, now, and Michael's saying that if we, he honored that contract for the price there, he, he was talking to Home Oil, he could've saved us thirty-seven cents a gallon, and shouldn't we just do that because he hadn't had the contract yet?
Well, through DNS. So did you make that purchase?
Through DNS, yes.
You, you did a transport load, or no?
Yes, a transport of clear diesel from DNS.
But, and some of that is, what I've been told, is that, this is, I mean, we were late in the year to get a contract going. That happens at the beginning of the year, so for us to be that many months into the year requesting a contract, I mean, I don't know what, I don't necessarily know what other people have been contracting for, but we did ourselves a disservice by waiting so long.
Well, that may be, but Michael said, like, if fuel goes down, then our contract is higher than the price you can get cash, but I also said, what happens if fuel goes up?
Right, it's a, it's a budgeting tool to be able to be in a contract, it's a budgeting tool.
We had needed to determine if we wanna do a contract to be a budgeting tool, and it may cost us more, like Michael pointed out, but you don't know, if gas goes up, say like, I give you this example, if a hurricane hits in August here, and New Orleans and Houston, and the refineries get hammered, and fuel goes up a dollar, then maybe having a contract locks us in where we're fifty cents a gallon cheaper, and that, no, that's an example.
Usually on fuel swings, you know, you're looking at one transport potential issue, you know, because we don't order them that often.
No.
Usually if there's something that's gonna spike it, it's gonna come back down eventually.
So you're saying we shouldn't have contracts, we should just price it by cash?
We did it several years ago. I guess, you know, at the end of the day, that's your guys' choice. I, I personally don't recommend it.
You think it's better, you think if we just go, when we need, as an on-need basis and do cash?
Who have you been calling for pricing?
Great Bend Co-op, Home Oil, and DNS Service.
And is that for gasoline as well?
Yes, and the gentleman from Great Bend Co-op told me that he will not be competitive in the gasoline, so in the future, he said, I didn't even need to call him, but I'll still call him.
Just for, for bid for at the time, cash or cash, you know? Well, I don't know, it's budgeting too, I don't know which way to go, because we could just take an average of what, what he pays, or what the price is, and say that's our budgeting tool. Of course, that can vary, you're not locked in, so we're, I don't know, what do you think? Do you think we can go with that?
There's, there's a lot of variables, you know?
Well, like I said, I think it's very late in the year, I mean, we're halfway through the year.
Well, now, I'm not talking now, yeah, I mean-
We didn't even start getting actual bids until the end of April, so that's, I mean, still late in the year.
So when do we restart this budget period here, coming up in July?
Yes.
And we'll get brand-new bids for all of next year?
Well, I suppose-
I don't think they'll do bids till after the first of the year.
Till they won't do bids till our first of the year, huh?
I believe January, February is when they typically do it.
Well, wouldn't they be doing bids now for winter fuel?
Our budget for the year is due to winter.
No, he's saying, if we're working on the budget for next year, can he get someone to sign, someone to give us a contract bid price for?
Somebody ask him to do a budget survey.
He meant, are we working on it now? We're working, I mean, we're gonna begin working on it, plugging in the numbers.
We're gonna have to start working on budgeting for next year, yeah.
Yes, yes, through, through August, we have-
And that's why, no, I just have an issue.
Wouldn't they be doing winter fuel prices now?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know if they do contracts on winter fuel, so I'd have to ask them.
Uh, there's pros and cons with contract, and he, and I, I get, sometimes I get contract for propane for my house, you know, so you lock in a price because if it goes up, but sometimes that it goes down, so if you get a locked-in price with contract, then you're guaranteed you know what you're gonna spend. If you play it by ear and just do cash, you can maybe save money, so it's a gamble, it's not a gamble, it's just a decision either way to do it.
You know, we haven't, for quite a few years now, there hasn't been any major swings in fuel prices that-
Yeah.
I think would've saved the county any money anywhere. You know, because you always gotta remember, of course, a lot of them try to buy it cheap and then sell that volume later, but you know, at the end of the day, the contractor selling you the fuel is gonna sell it for more, he's gonna make profit.
He's gonna probably bid out, yeah, to lock it, because, yeah, yeah, I, you're right, but sometimes it gives somebody like us budgeting, like Alexis said, then we know what we can budget for, we know how many gallons, how much it's gonna cost us, so we can budget, and then it helps us with our numbers, you know? If we don't, if we just go on a cash thing-
If it didn't have a benefit, no one would ever do it. I understand, there's always risk involved, and you can't pre, you know, determine what the variables are going to be, but if it didn't have a benefit, it wouldn't even be on the table for people to have an option to do that.
Yeah, you're right.
So we won't know until we keep seeking, and I'm, I'm all about asking, at least to get some pricing, so.
So for now, what you, yeah, yeah, for now, should we just tell, do what we're just doing, go on a cash bid, cash basis when we do the transporter? Like we, like you're did that right now at DNS.
Well, I mean, we made a motion to enter into that contract, so we need to either undo that, I mean, I mean, I think we need to address it. Did you contact Great Bend after we had approved that? And they were supposed to send paperwork to you?
That was my understanding, I don't-
Let's, let's not, let's not take action on it today, and why don't you see what they say? Because I-
You know, on, on this phone call, he said that this year, he said if for some reason the price would go above that two forty-four, that they would honor that two forty-four for us this year.
If we're in the contract?
The way he talked, they didn't have a written contract, that's what I'm trying to get from him, is I believe he is working on a verbal contract.
I guess my concern is, if the commission made a commitment to be in a contract, we need to honor that, because we did that. But if they're not presenting a contract to us, then we, we're not adhering to anything because there's nothing there.
Yeah, I need to do some more investigation.
Investigate with them and ask them about that, and then maybe we can just dissolve the contract, or, or pursue it further and-
So however you wanna do it, you know, I can, I can try to see if y'all get us paperwork and get it to you as soon as I can, and-
Right now it's two forty-four, and you're saying we just got some for two oh eight, so we saved thirty-five, four cents or whatever.
Thirty-five nine three.
Which is great, that saves us money, but you don't know that you're always gonna be saving money, it could go up too, and then, like I said, that's the issue. So, yeah, can you check with them on that, the contract? Do we wanna?
I think we do not take action until we hear back from the company that we-
No, I agree, no, I agree with that.
I mean, if we made a commitment, I'm gonna honor that commitment.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, do you wanna not deal with the, uh-
Oh, the job, well, yes, we have just a few minutes. I, I wanted to double-check though, Michael, because I have the job descriptions here, I have Director of Public Works, and then I have the Road and Bridge Supervisor. And I was just looking at, the Road and Bridge Supervisor compared to the one that you printed out when you made the edits, I'm only finding like one thing, you only changed about the, who does the budget, you just, is that the only change that you made?
That I recall.
This is the only thing I've found, okay.
Yeah, there wasn't much, you know, and they pretty much mirror each other pretty close.
Well, that's some of what we're, we're going to address. I mean, I, basically, we have two job descriptions that describe the same job.
Yep.
Only one is getting paid only slightly more, as far as the last pay structure that we've had. The other one is getting paid only slightly less, but they have the same function, and a lot of the job functions under Road and Bridge Supervisor simply say, assists this position, assists this position, assists this position. So I think either there needs to be more of a structure where the hierarchy is defined, or these jobs need to be combined.
I don't believe that it ever got rewrote, except for a few things.
So what it looks like is that the Road and Bridge Supervisor was the head of the department, and when they created the Director of Public Works position, they basically just created a mirror position and gave it a slightly higher pay grade. On paper, that's what it looks like. But I wanted to make sure with you that the only change you noted was the budget.
I believe that, I thought there was a couple other small things, but I do remember that one.
Okay. The rest of it is the wording almost identical, unless you changed, I didn't check the summary.
You know, I believe the theory was, when they did the, Director of Public Works was to be able to oversee three departments, and from the way things have been going the last few years, that there really hasn't been much time to dedicate to that, because so much of the time of the, my position's been directed directly towards the Highway Department, and there hasn't been much time to dedicate towards learning and assisting with the landfill and the weed operations.
Yeah, I mean, I, there is one line item dedicated to that, and it says Supervisors, Road and Bridge Supervisor, Weed Department, and Transfer Station. But from what I've learned in the last budgeting process is, you're not doing the budgets for those departments, they're still doing their own budgets. But from what I've learned in the last budgeting process is you're not doing the budgets for those departments. They're still doing their own budgets.
Yes, and if they got any questions or concerns and stuff, they'll ask me questions along the way.
And then.
Typically.
You know, for example, on the Roden Bridge Supervisor, it says makes necessary one calls for special projects. So that person is informed that when something's going on where there's digging, they do the one call. But then under Director of Public Works, it says ensures that one calls are made on all county projects. So there's a lot of overlapping that just doesn't really clearly define why there are two positions. If the person that's assigned to do the one calls does their job, you don't need a, a double oversight there. I mean, it would, it would fall back on that person for not doing it. Otherwise, the way this is set up, it falls back on the supervisor for not checking that the other person underneath them did it, who's the supervisor of the crew who's doing the work. I mean, it's a little, it's a little confusing. I think we need to do some merging of responsibilities. And separation of tasks. And I have my own ideas. I don't know how you wanna do that. If you wanna each do our own ideas and bring them together or if you wanna collaborate on.
Well, on the, on the, weed department transfer station. Those two individuals, Kerry and Dan, really run in their department, aren't they? Their, their Kerry, uh, does a transfer station. He does a budget, makes, he really controls everything that's going on out there basically, right? And Dan, he's in the weed department. I mean, I.
What, has there been any budgeting benefit to that, Don? Has there been any budgeting benefit to having the Director of Public Works be supervising those other two departments? I mean, we're not combining funds, correct? We're not using funds from one into the other, anything like that. So there's still.
Besides, the Highway Department is providing a budget, not just weed.
At the Highway Department's expense.
Yes.
That the, okay, so there's an issue I have. Why are we subsidizing the weed department with a Highway Department employee? To get the weed department job completed? Therefore, we're really manipulating the budget, you know, by taking from one and giving to the other and not charging it to that department. So what is the, we don't even know the actual cost, in other words, of the weed department because we have someone from the Highway Department part-time. Are you billing hours to them or anything?
I think Liz might be billing this, but she's not on weed.
And Colton Panzer.
I would like to straighten that out.
Colton Panzer helping too now, right?
Yes.
Well, in a way though, like.
You know, ultimately, if a person can come up with a good quality part-time employee like they used to have, that benefits the most. But you know, instead of adding another part-time employee, the commission at the time chose that this would be the best way to do it. You know, and, and there's days it works great and then there's days it'd be great to be able to utilize that person within the Highway Department too.
Well, and Alexis, in a way, I think having, say like Colton Panzer, right now they're really busy with growing weeds because it's the busy time of the year with weed drugs. And Mr. Han needs help. So, so taking somebody maybe from the, as long as Mr. Panzer isn't, uh, not, does that hurt you in the Highway Department though where he can?
There's days, yeah. You know, we could, we could be utilizing him to help get those tractors out or.
Well, that's where, yeah.
There's, there's always a downfall to.
I could see consolidating a little bit where Mr. Panzer can help him out.
But what I'm getting at is.
But I know your budget, you're talking.
It's not a clear, yeah, there's no clear definition as to what the actual cost is. So is it fair to one department, you know, I'm, I'm sure Ladonna would like to have an assistant in there that she's not paying for out of her budget, is what I'm getting at.
Well, I'm, hey, I agree with you there. I think if Mr. Panzer's going to work for a weed department today, he should, you should know it in Liz or whoever does the billing. Should say bill weed department today for Mr. Colton Panzer, right? Because he's getting.
Did you say it was Colton or did you say it was Liz?
Colton. Colton Panzer.
I guess.
Why are we paying a mechanic to drive a truck? Why are, to, to spray? That's more expensive.
Does the mechanic make more than a truck driver?
I think fifty cents.
Yeah, I, I, this needs to be worked out because I think there's just a more efficient way to do it. And if there's someone that we're not needing full-time in the Highway Department, then we need to clear that up as well.
Well, we need full-time in the Highway Department.
Then how are we affording to send them away all summer?
It's not all summer, but it's about two months of half-days probably. You know, it kind of varies year to year, but it's not all year process or all summer process.
No, it's part-time thing because it's busy right now. And I don't really see.
Spraying weed's seasonal.
I would just say.
It's not a year-round.
Yeah, spring and summer. I would say though that.
I can't remember how many hours it comes out to on average.
Yeah, and part of this also is there's an overlap with the noxious weed in the landfill. Because it's my understanding that when they need two people at the landfill, that's why Mr. Han is not leaving. And then that's why we have another person from another department coming to spray one half of the county so that he only has responsibility to the other half. Therefore, he can time his days to be there when Kerry needs a second person. So we need to, I think we need to work on that a little bit. And figure out exactly, you know, how can we approve a budget request when we don't know how much extra labor they're actually paying for? Because it's coming out of a different pocket of money.
Yeah. Of course, you could say though that weed department and the landfill departments and the Highway Department are all really under one, one umbrella, really his.
Well, that's what they, that's what I think.
Those are the intentions and it never got, it never got pushed that way due to the dedication of time.
Well, because I think statutorily, we can't, statutorily, we can't have, we have to provide a noxious weed department. So I don't, I don't believe we can have the budget as, um, combined.
They have to be a separate entity?
Right, right.
So that's why we have separate budgeting for them now, huh?
Right.
Okay.
Actually, all three of those, I believe, are statutorily required. The, the Highway Department, the, the noxious weed and the refuse, yeah. Well, we don't need to finish this today. I just wanted to make sure we touch on that because that's gonna be coming up in our budgeting process. So thank you very much.
Yes.
I don't have any.
The only issue on that to finalize this is, like when, say Colton Panzer does work out there, just make sure he bills it to the Highway Department budget, not your Highway Department.
The weed department.
To weed department budget.
Well, we kinda need to, I mean, I think we need to at least know.
I thought Liz was doing that and I'll check to see.
Well, we would know on the time card, like you get a, you clock in now.
Didn't Dan budget? Didn't, uh, Dan Han a budget for a part-time help, hours?
Well, he, he has that one guy out there.
I don't know whether to budget it.
He's for the landfill. That's landfill. We need to, I'll ask those questions. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do later. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Michael. Have a great week.
You too.
And if you need us overtime, you know, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, go for it.
We're ready for you.
I know, Don.
I have budget and then I also want to go into executive session for medical consultant like we did before. So I don't know what you want to do first.
Let's do the executive session first. Do you need ten minutes or five or do you have?
Maybe ten.
For a discussion?
Okay.
Um, would you like the clerk or just the assistant? Um, I moved to recess into executive session for ten minutes for the purpose of discussing medical consultant options. Justification pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, two B. Number three, to discuss employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with a representative or representatives of the public body or agency. To reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with the Health Department Administrator, um, is that your title? Director, Administrator?
Administrator.
Administrator, um, Acting HR County Clerk and the Commission.
Okay.
If there is no further discussion, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Kerry.
But until contracts are signed, I would appreciate that these are not shared.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that?
That's fine.
Okay.
And you can proceed on with that.
Oh. Don, do you have the ability to find out what our contractual line item was for the medical consultant for the EMS department? It would have been combined in, okay? Oh, that's the other thing we were going to do is come up with a format for budgeting.
This is it. Yeah.
Oh, this is, oh, this is, okay.
The mine's a little bit different because I added. I added some salary things and I have more funds than coming in than other departments.
Right, you have an income, right, understood.
So this, um, my budget is a little bit less than last year. Most of that is because of, of grants. There's a grant that ended fourteen twenty-two ended in, in July. And because I have federal grants that go from October, September, state grants that go from July to June. And then the calendar year, all my money's kind of, I don't want to say messed up, but it doesn't show in a calendar year.
Yeah, you're rotating, yeah, it's not for your January to December.
So the loss is a grant that ended in June, uh, June. And that ends in June, so we won't have any of it for next year. So that's basically what the decrease is, is the loss of that grant. So therefore, the loss of all the expenses out of that grant. It's not a loss, it just ended. So Gailene Zier.
A reduction, yeah.
Yeah, Gailene Zier was a contract person that did that grant. And so she'll no longer, after the end of June, will have a contract because the money's gone and she'll be out, so. So in estimating my expenses, they are a little less than last year. However, the income is also, I wanted to go ahead and give you this budget. But I do not know what the grants are gonna be. I will not know that till probably the last week in June at, at the closest. And so they, they could vary somewhat. And then I just put last year's tax distribution in the, in the spots too. So those could change and I would like to bring you a, a more up-to-date grant with a budget when I get those figures. But I didn't know if you just wanted it's now, so you knew what you were looking at. And then I just included on the back what's in contractual and the modities. So you, you know what's coming out of those two bigger line items. Especially contractual, a lot of stuff comes out of contractual, which I did budget less for this year because, um, like I said, because of some of the grants, I think.
We got a question on your patient fees for revenue. Now, do some people, if they're, based on their incomes, get cheap or free services? And then some people are wealthier, then they have to pay more. Is that, do you have a?
Yes.
Schedule on that?
Yes.
How that works, okay.
There's sliding fee scale on some of our programs. Some of them don't like immunizations. And if you don't have any health insurance, you can get free vaccine because we get it free. But you have to pay the full administration fee, which is twenty dollars and twenty-five cents per shot.
That goes toward your expenses for your.
For our administration expenses.
Sure.
Some counties will slide those down. We slid those down for years and years. But, um, we decided not to do that anymore because we were just losing too much money. You can't lose that much money. Now, if there's a family in hardship, I will say, you know, you can give me five dollars a month and I take what they give us. I mean, I, I, and there has been some instances, maybe if there's a transient person who has no income or, or anything. But, um, was exposed to something they might need a shot for.
Yeah.
I, I would maybe, um, write off that. I don't do that very often. I usually try to get a couple bucks and set up a payment plan.
So you have like a transient person. Can you guys test them for hepatitis tuberculosis? Either you're not getting your job, that's more the hospital type.
And they, they are rural health clinics, so they can slide fee scales too and do some of those things for free.
But you can order testing through the Health Department?
No.
Really?
No. That's something I would have to ask the medical consultant. He would have to order that testing.
They'd have to order that.
Yeah. Now, if we have an outbreak, if we have an outbreak, first we refer them to their physician. But if they don't have one, then we will do that to our medical consultant.
You could refer or whatever.
You think that would be a great thing to provide through public health is.
It's expensive. It's the cost.
Oh, because then they're not necessarily paying.
Right, right. It's the cost.
It would be a cost.
Like if somebody has tuberculosis and we have, if somebody has a positive TV skin test and they decide they have active tuberculosis by testing. All their contacts would have to get TV skin tested and all kinds of things. We have to pay for all of that. Yes, we do. If it is an infectious disease, we would have to pay for that to test those people. Like I said, if they have insurance and can be referred to a physician, then that's how we do it. If they don't, we would have to, we would be responsible for that if there were contacts that had to be tested. But I can order it. The medical consultant would have to order, but we'd have to pay for it.
You probably have people, patients come in, you suspect they were ill from something and you couldn't do nothing about it.
Right, and they get referred to the medical.
Then you reverse that.
Yes, because we're RNs, we can. I'm an RN. I can't diagnose anything. Even if I know you have chicken pox, I can't tell you you have chicken pox because I'm an RN.
Yeah.
I cannot diagnose.
Did you tell me to go up to the clinic?
I could tell you to go up to the clinic, yeah. I know. It's, we used to be able to.
So your hands are tied in a lot of ways when you, when you wish you could do more probably.
That's why when the Health Department first started, they would like look in kids' ears and we would call the doctor and said, hey, this kid's got red ears and pus coming out. They need an antibiotic. They'd call the pharmacy and order it and they'd go, we can't do that anymore. Doctors will not, doctors will not.
Because liability.
Because of liability, exactly.
Well, you're doing doctor, uh, you're doing doctor do there.
Right. We, we used to do that. We can't do that anymore.
Yeah, and that's not, I don't think that's good because you guys have the technical, you have the expertise as an RN to know how to do that.
Right, and well, that's who you see and that's who gives you your primary care anyway. But I, that's, that's amazing because I always felt that was the, as a young, when I was really young. I felt that was the function of the Public Health Department is that if you.
It used to be, yeah. It's not anymore.
Interesting. So you've been there through that change, right?
Yes.
Because you've been there.
So they really take a lot of your responsibility there.
Is that right? Now, if somebody comes in and they see a pediatrician in Salina, we'll look in their ears. But if they're crying and fussy.
Your attention time.
And you're concerned and they have a fever, it doesn't matter what I see. I'm gonna refer you to your physician anyway. It's kind of like chicken pox. I can say, well, it kind of looks like chicken pox, but you need your doctor to diagnose it because it has to be documented in their medical chart.
It gotta be medical and it's gotta be, right, you gotta abide by the law, the lawsuits. We're some lawsuit crazy countries that.
Yeah.
They restrict you guys so much. That's too bad.
It is, it is.
Because you could be utilized so much better probably.
Yes, and it seems like we're utilized more when they have a shortage somewhere. Like CAMB healthy physicals, we do a lot of those until, um, all the doctor's offices around us are full and have all their physician spots filled. Well, then they don't want us to do them anymore. They want to see their own patients.
They want to.
But then when they are short again, they want us to do them. So that's what we're there for, to fill the gaps that aren't being.
Yeah, do that.
Taken care of by the primary care.
During the normal time.
Right.
But, well, I, I, I don't have any issues with this.
Well, like I said, my income is very, it's variable and, and so I will send a final copy if that's all right going later. I just gave you kind of what I could guesstimate at this point in time.
And all that, all your contractual.
Oh, yeah, quite a bit of, that's on the back too. So you can see what all goes under there.
You have your staff, you have each one of kind of assigned to a specific task? Or do they all kind of cross-work with each other?
They all kind of cross-train as far as.
In other words, most of them can do each other's job or whatever.
Right. My, my clerks are both CNAs, so they can do foot care and blood pressures and things like that. All of the nurses can do the office stuff pretty well. I mean, there's not, you know, everybody's not cross-trained a hundred percent. But if it's only two nurses in the office, we can function perfectly fine. I, I have four staff members and then Lisa works one day a week and she does CAMB healthies and things like that. So, so I'm the only RN. So if I'm gone somewhere, Sherry Pickering can only do adult tetanus shots and adult flu shots. She can't do children's shots and things because they're required to be supervised by our RN. If I'm not in town, I can't really supervise her. So that's one of the, some health departments will let their LPNs do whatever they want to when they're not there. But I just don't because she works under my license. So, not that she's not capable, it's just.
No, well, you want to keep everything but the book.
It's just a liability thing.
Now, I always wanted to take a trip to South American Union, all those specialized shots for, can you guys do that down here?
We can do a lot of those. Um, some of them we can order. We have to special order them.
Oh, okay.
Um, and some things are pills that the pharmacy would have to order, but we can sit down with people and certainly go through and make recommendations.
What you need for each country.
But then their doctors have to order them.
Doctors have, sure. Would you guys have the knowledge kind of?
We look it up. We look it up because we don't know because they change all the time.
Yeah, because some of these countries, you gotta have a bunch of different shots.
Right, a bunch of different ones.
Yeah, okay, that's a good service right there.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people don't realize you do that.
Yeah, we can look them up and, and talk to them about it.
I like in the summer when you don't have near the flu and all the colds, you probably don't have near the run-on shots as you would in.
Well, that's when everybody's getting shots for school.
School.
Oh, yeah, we're almost sometimes busier in the summer than we are.
Is it a law that these little children have to have shots to go to public school?
Yes, and most they have, um, a medical or a religious exemption.
Medical labor, huh? Religious labor or something, and a parent would have to put.
They have to sign a form every year.
Sign that for the school probably. Which shots, which shots do you all give a kid? Like, does a first grader get different shots than a fifth grader or?
Usually they're all done by the time they get to kindergarten, except for when they're seventh graders, sixth or seventh graders, they get a.
Booster.
Tetanus, diptheria booster, T-DAP prothetist booster. Meningitis is gonna be required this year. Peptitis A is gonna be required this year for certain age groups.
What's the difference between T-DAP and D-TAP?
D, it's, um, it's how the components are. The tetanus, the big T in the T-DAP, the tetanus component is higher. And the D-TAP, the diptheria component is higher. It's just how it, the components and the ages that they're recommended. And I think you had asked me one time if you can get a tetanus shot without the rest. You can. It's just called a T, a tetanus toxoid. We don't carry it, but. It's just called a tetanus toxoid. We don't carry it, but I don't know if it can be ordered in individual doses or not. But there is one that's just tetanus.
And adults should get them every so often too, right?
Every ten years unless you have an injury. After five years, you should have
I haven't had one thirty years, and I probably should. I could have kept myself with a rusty nail out on the farm, probably not do it.
Yeah. Probably not. So it lives in the dirt and the soil and cow manure and things, so. But yes, there's all different age groups that get shots and they're different for older kids than they are for younger kids. There are different formulations, yeah.
I've read, I've looked through this, actually, I don't have any
I had just a few questions. The, okay. Capital outlay, 2018 and 19 approved was very different. We had fourteen thousand three hundred forty, then eight hundred ninety-seven.
Don will have to explain. That's where the auditors put, because they have to give us the same amount of money every year or I lose grant money, that's where they adjust in there. And Don was putting it in commodities.
So we budgeted a capital outlay.
Well, it was being put in commodities, but
They wanted to shift it.
But I wanted to take it out of commodities and see what my real expense was.
Yeah. Right here under capital outlay.
Isn't that where the auditors just adjust things? Yeah.
So, that's okay. I'm just trying to understand this. And then the budgeted funds for transfer, we don't have any? You usually don't do that? So what's in your capital outlay right now?
Well, that's not our big capital outlay. Our big capital outlay is outside of the budget.
Right. Oh, okay. I didn't, Don, you're right. I mean, okay, now I'm understanding.
Yeah. There's like seventy thousand dollars in that big capital outlay.
And what, do you have any planned purchases?
Yes, I do. Probably after the first of the year, Windows 2007 will not be supported anymore, so we're going to have to do something.
I'll get your operating
Because everything we have is 2007.
Software.
Okay.
So that will be a chunk.
You got network and software.
Yes, we have our own server and everything, yeah.
Is that your only planned large purchase?
That's my only large purchase that I can see coming out.
Okay.
But
So when you get your rollover into your actual exterior capital outlay, where is most of that coming from?
Um, there's not a
If we're not, what I'm saying is
It's about ten thousand a year. It's probably misestimates and stuff we collect.
Yeah, you're giving yourself a cushion. I'm just questioning if we're not actually budgeting a transfer, then
Because we don't know that we'll have one, I guess.
And you're waiting on grant money to come in to make sure that you subsidize that portion of your budget.
And it used to be we had delia pittered interest when it was high. We get the interest off the interest back into our account. Well, it's only been a couple thousand, so it's not been given to us. But before, it was put in here and then transferred out, I think, is why that line is there.
Okay.
And like Eric, he just, for aging, one year you guys had us pay for it and then the next
Two years, yeah.
Two years, so I didn't know if there was something that needed to go in there or not, so I left it. Because I don't think
There will be.
Okay.
It was fifty percent of what the commission had paid prior, right? Or was it fifty percent of the total?
We paid for this in your care act, but I mean, so whatever they requested for this in your care act.
It's like eleven.
We took out of ours and set for somewhere along the line, but communication about what they're dealing with. I don't think they actually took it out last year.
I don't think they did.
They took it out of the local county general one, so.
So I don't know if we need to put that back in. It was like eleven hundred dollars or something like that.
I think we decided we'd wait till the auditors got here and see how that's adjusted.
Okay, okay.
So where am I seeing your actual expenses or your actual proposed budget expenses less your total projected revenue?
No, you just have to subtract these two.
Subtract the two, twenty-seven minus the two twelve.
Right. And we're going to have to cut in my budget if I can't, if these numbers don't change with the grant application approvals.
But you're, okay, so our portion is what you're saying is the real estate distribution?
Yes. Those tax are, is your portion.
Okay, that, yeah.
Yeah. And how those change also.
So what was last year's?
This, this is last year's figures over here for the tax part.
One fourteen?
Yes. And those other little things.
That was last year?
Yes.
And you're basically requesting the same thing?
Okay, so watercraft vehicle tax.
Yeah, I don't know how those will change.
Okay, but, okay, so where's the total line item for us out of our
I don't, I don't have that totaled.
Okay.
Over to the side. Yeah, I don't.
Okay, so it would be everything down till state formula grant?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, I got to get my calculator on.
About one hundred twenty-one thousand.
Yeah. It's over, over half of my budget now.
And it wasn't half before?
Oh, it just creeps up every year a little bit.
Are you getting grants, more money grants or less money grants every year?
Um, we, for the last five years, we've got a huge grant that's been about twenty-five thousand a year. And that's the one that ended in June, so.
Oh, we're going to lose that.
Does this salary is one hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred and ten?
Yeah. That's, that would be what last year was.
And how
No, it's five. It was a five-year, yeah, ran its course and it's over now.
So you're basing that breakdown on our collection from vehicle tax, property tax, et cetera, based on what was last year's?
Yes, because I don't have new figures.
But this is without a new valuation, correct? Or is this according to the new valuation?
No, this is last year.
Just using last year. She just goes one step further than what everybody else does.
It does the breakdown.
But that property tax, the very top one won't be calculated until they input all these other numbers in.
Right.
And then that number will be calculated to figure out what
So usually the auditors can make my, me balance income versus expenses. I just put it there to see kind of where we were last year.
Okay, so last year, yeah.
Yeah, I thought about leaving all that off, but
No, that's good for me. I'm learning too.
To know that because
Me too.
They, otherwise they're just
That's good to have that in the bag.
Yeah, so. And then I just put a fifty cent per hour raise in there. I don't know how, what your merit, how that's going to change, so, you know, that would directly affect the budget and longevity also. If you decide to do it a different way or how you decide to do it, I, yeah, so.
And thank you for putting their credentials on there too, plus, or all of your credentials. Helpful to know. Okay. One more budget in. Do you have any other?
Well, like I told Randy, I would appreciate you not share that name, and so we
This, this doc.
Yep, yep, that's it.
Shall we get more information?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all. And so we figured that out. Like I said, he's supposed to be here, I think it's the fifth. Fourth of July is on Thursday.
You're going to meet with him personally?
Yes. Because we'll be open, we generally are, the day after fourth, so. Or even if we're not, I told him, whatever time and whatever worked for him, I would meet with him, so.
It'll be a Friday?
Yeah. Every other Friday afternoon he has off, so, and he was very, shared his cell phone and call me anytime, text me anytime, very Well, I know.
We'll find some.
I know.
But thank you for reminding us. We need to do that.
Okay.
Just stay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, just put my agenda away.
Let's go to the, kind of coffee shop, huh?
Yes. Okay, before we do that, and we're a little behind, let's talk about
Well, do Mr. Grace thing too, do we want to?
Go ahead. Do that first.
Well, I was just going to say, he emailed me back, said he can meet next Monday.
So do we want to have Don notify him that we put him on the agenda? And just put him on for
I could do that.
Okay.
And I can give you some time.
Do you want to just start with him? Try to get him to come right away, ten thirty or ten
Well, I don't know if he wants to get here. I don't know, I don't know, yeah, what time would be best.
Do you want to contact him or do you want me to?
Could you contact him? Yeah, why don't you contact him and then work a time with him? If you, is that okay?
That's what I had put earlier.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. We never really finalized anything.
I think it'd be proper to come from
Yeah, yeah. No, that sounds good, yeah, yeah. That's funny.
Let him know you have a slot for him. If it doesn't work, you can, you can change that around yourself.
Right.
So I wanted to touch on Mr. Walter's position. You said that we did not verify start date.
No, we don't, I don't have a verified start date yet. He sent me back dates for, that he's available to do the UA and then the physical capacity.
What dates are those?
The thirteenth and the twenty-first.
So we know it's not going to be until the end of this period?
And technically, in the upper letter I did, told him that we wanted to see if he could start the twenty-fourth, but I'm not sure. I'll give those physical capacity testing results back in order for him to start the twenty-fourth, so.
And could you please ask him if he would be willing to at least schedule, he wanted to do the, the
July schedule?
No, well, that, yes.
And also, that was the drugs, the sheriff's department review all the drugs. And also, I talked to him, I saw him this weekend about scheduling, who's scheduling in or not. I think Brandon's still in there in the month of June, and I'm scheduled. Don, do you, have you heard that too? That Brandon's still scheduled to be working, and I know we terminated him basically in the May. But I guess, I don't know if he's going to work out to the end of June. And Derek was hearing that. He was putting himself on for like three, three days, one a week, which would make it tremendous.
Three twenty fours?
Yeah, which, no, I don't know if that's
Are we missing someone in the department?
Have you got the schedule from them? You asked for it, remember?
I do, I have the schedule.
Yeah, let's take a look at that and make sure we know what we're doing.
Yeah, I don't want to make a
No, but we need to know.
Well, Derek's not heard this, and like he's trying to maybe
Well, let's not even discuss that meeting session until we find out on the schedule.
Exactly.
So, okay, so then if he's willing
I don't know, I don't
I guess what I'm saying is, we may not have a particular start date set yet, but I think we need to assign them his first tasks. That way he knows what to get started on. One is to find the medical consultant, MD, which I've already put out a message to
Yeah.
To another department, another county. And then the scheduling, because that all needs to be done before
Yeah, with the law enforcement, me, and we go down and
Do an inventory.
All the mad inventory.
Maybe he'd be willing to do all that stuff before his actual first start date.
I think he would. He would want to, he would do it freely as a volunteer medical person.
Yeah.
He'd be very willing to work.
But let's hit, let's give him that in writing.
Yeah.
We would like him to pursue these things as soon as possible.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, I
What else do you
Well, that's, I wanted to make sure we touch on that. And then I would like to, the, there's two supervisory physicians in the highway department. I would like to come back to the table
With one?
Yeah, with one, and kind of reevaluate what this means, because there's a lot of overlapping there, right?
Well, one's assist and one's do it.
Right.
This one, in other words, he wants this guy to assist this guy.
Right. But then, but then there's something this person does, that then this person's supposed to check up and see if that person did. So I think we need to talk about that. But also, I wanted to bring the discussion back to the table about having the emergency manager potentially help do a few things. I have two things in mind now. I have one as spraying noxious weed.
Not do that anymore?
No, as helping. Why wouldn't he be able to help? If we're pulling someone from the highway department to do it, why can't we pull someone like him to do it? When he's not away, when he, you know, I mean, if he's here and available, but doesn't have necessarily office hours to be attending to the public, I don't see why he couldn't do that. He's a phone call away.
You know what else I do that?
Well, there's no harm in asking. That and then helping with the 3-1-1 program, which ties into the noxious weed as well, because noxious weed can use 3-1-1 to note where they've already sprayed or where it needs sprayed.
And you, you know, you had that guy call me, you talked to him. I've never heard back from him since. Maybe we need to contact him back and say, hey, what's going on?
I'll send you the email he sent me.
Send me his, you got my email.
Because I think, I think when he leaves, we can call in whenever we want.
But he was going to have his people contact me about
Doing a tutorial?
Yeah, coming down here maybe and
Yeah.
Or get, or do a tutorial online or on phone or come out here or
Yeah.
Start going through this stuff. I haven't heard back since. Now, maybe they're busy, but we maybe, I don't have their number, but do you?
I do. I'll, I'll forward you the email I got from you.
Yeah, just forward it.
Or did they email you?
Well, he called me just on the phone.
Okay, then I'll, I'll send you the email.
And I didn't save his name, and he said, yeah. I said, I'd be willing to work with you.
I'll send you the email.
And you, he said he talked to you, and I said, that's fine, and he's from North Carolina, like that guy.
Uh, yeah, wherever their, wherever their home office is. Yeah, I do see three shifts a week here in a few weeks. Are we missing someone or is that Don, are we missing someone in our EMS department right now?
Employee ones.
Uh-huh. Is anyone on vacation or anything? Okay.
It doesn't look to me like the
There's one week where there are three shifts.
Brett used to take every Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And I don't show if he's on the call.
Yeah, I see that. I see that.
And Wednesdays used to be the volunteer day typically, and
So it looks to me like that though there's some scheduling where some people are leaving, like instead of doing their six to six, they're doing six to something else. So are we permitting that? I mean, I, I thought the whole point of the department having twenty-four hour shifts is because that's what they wanted. Now I see that one, two, three, four, five, five days, there are people splitting shifts, and I'm just wondering
I don't necessarily know about splitting shifts without looking at it, but I was told that like, for example, on the ninth, the six to nine thirty, Shado was covering from six to nine thirty, six AM to nine thirty for Brandon until he can get there, so he's coming off duty from Platte County. And I know sometimes they do that on Wednesdays with the part timers. Some of them are scheduled and they can't get here till eight. And that's been kind of a typical thing.
Okay.
They did twenty
Oh, I see, because it happens again on a Sunday.
They're only doing twelve-hour shifts. I thought they were doing twenty-four hours.
No, they're twenty-four.
Six AM to six PM.
Oh, oh.
Or six A to six A.
Sorry, that's
Oh, okay.
Twelve minutes.
I see.
Six to six, six to six.
Oh, six AM, yeah, I see. But like the, yeah, the week of the sixteenth, the nineteenth and the twenty-second there, we got a triple lapse there.
Which that will be up to the new director to have to rearrange some of that. I guess, the problem is we accepted a resignation that ended on the thirty-first, so then I, what we could do is just move to approve this coming payroll, knowing that that schedule was already in place when we accepted the resignation, so
Yeah, I agree.
That's pretty much it.
Well, and they're set up now, and we need, we need him in there. We need somebody, right?
Yeah, I mean, this, this finishes out the month. We're already on the second week.
But then we want to make sure after
So that's two and a half weeks.
The new schedule, we make sure it's
I would, I would think we'd want to tell Derek that he needs to make sure that he does the new schedule.
Yeah, there were three things.
If that means, and technically, he's not supposed to work until the physical capacity testing is done, but if they normally are working on the schedule already at that point in time, maybe he goes ahead and does it and we're just paying for his time while he's doing it.
Yeah, I was thinking there are three things he could do, start doing immediately. One is start contacting for, well, the licensing.
Consultant.
Start the process for the license.
Medical consultant.
Getting, contacting for, to find a medical consultant and the schedule.
And the drug
And then you can
Drug inventory with the sheriff and a
It was the clerk.
Does he want the sheriff?
It was the clerk.
Not the sheriff. He was wanting the law enforcement. And me, I was going to go help him as a minister. That way we got inventory control and make sure all the meds were correct.
That's fine with me.
Yeah. Well, we want to make sure
I thought he'd sent an email.
He did, but
But I know, I talked to him, he knew
But you could grab a deputy.
Last week, we wanted one of us commissioners to be there, and I volunteered because I did those and and, and the law enforcement, so we know what we got, inventory. That way we don't have any issues with any of that stuff.
Now, do you guys want to try and have like a meet and greet? He just said his schedule is like really wacky, but I would, I think that he would be available But I would, I think that he would be available the 13th through the 21st if he's available for testing that day.
Why don't we just do it on the first, after our commission meeting, if he's available?
On July 1st?
We can even schedule that at the end of our commission meeting, that way we have a little bit of a start time. If he's not available, we'll discuss it, that gives us a couple of weeks.
So, so you still don't have a solid start date for him yet, based on drug testing and all that stuff, right, Dawn?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Because technically, he's...
Not until, after the 21st, basically.
And I'm assuming that he's probably working on some monthly schedules as well, that he's trying to give...
Well, he's the one informing about Brandon on 3-3-3 up there, so, he's heard from him down there. I think he's talked to people, really. He's coordinated with him.
If he's willing to just start some of that, how do we need to correspond with him? Does he email?
He does email.
I have his phone number. We could call him.
Okay, I, I would like to assign those tasks to him, not that he necessarily has to get them done before he starts, but those are our immediate needs. The licensing, the medical consultant, the next month's schedule, and the documentation, the inventory.
I'll give his phone number, he wouldn't care.
Okay. Or, wanna write it down? Wanna write it down?
Yeah.
And then, once I know for sure start, for start date with him, then I'll notify the state that he's authorized, and I'll put his...
You said you're gonna notify the state?
Yeah, I have to send him a letter.
Did we follow up on any of those additional licenses?
No. Not yet.
Okay.
I think that's something that he should do, because he's gonna have, be responsible for...
Sure.
...doing all of them. But I think I, I talked with him about that, but...
Might, right, remind him.
I talked to him about a lot of stuff, so...
Yeah, we might maybe remind him, because, yeah, there's a lot going on, you know, it's easy to forget something unless you write everything down, and think, I forget, I was wrong.
Okay, so, and then I wanted to touch on the hospital again. I believe, did we ask Mr. Granzo to provide us the cash balance sheets? We didn't, did we? I feel like that's the missing portion of the budget that we really need to look at. I would like to see like, a three-year history of the, of the cash balance, turn, like the, what the turnover's been at the end of the year. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think we need to request that.
And also, we were doing, last Thursday, we said we made contact with Mr. Eric Otte, too, about how to understand that hospital budget.
Yes.
Right, because he, he works with them.
So, I think we were gonna do that this Thursday, potentially, okay?
Yeah, I guess that's good. Because, I wonder if we need to make, make sure Mr. Otte's available, and probably contact him.
I was gonna try to get him on the budget, I just was at that grant...
For Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, if you could contact him, see if he's available.
Okay.
Because, yeah, because he can explain, that's the most confusing budget I've ever seen.
Okay, and then, I, I had a request from, from some citizens. Basically, the people who have tried to get some documents from the hospital are being asked to pay a lot of money. They're being asked to pay a dollar a page for anything they want to look at. So, you know, I'm not sure how the board wants to address this. I mean, we can ask our board that we appointed to provide documents at the suggested rate, which I think is 25 cents a page, Dawn?
I think that's a statute.
But it's a minimum, I think, right? It's, or is it a set amount?
I thought they set a maximum they could charge, because counties were charging...
Well, I, what, well, does the hospital board remember to get them, just part of their job?
But I'm saying, if someone else wants them, what, what we've recently found out, and the complaint to me is, I have asked for hospital documents, but now it's gonna cost me hundreds of dollars to see what are open documents. And that does seem very non-accommodating by the county to not, I mean, we had the conversation in here with Mr. Granzo, when someone wanted to know how much the doctors made, and he said, well, that's only known collectively, and it's not. You can know individually what the numbers are. And I think we just need to make it affordable and transparent as to what we're doing. I mean, it's legitimate that people have questions. So, I don't know if maybe we need to request, I mean, you get a copy here, correct, of those documents? So, we can then provide anyone those documents and charge them ourselves, and then are we able to, I mean, we could technically bill the hospital for doing...
I'm not 100% sure that he...
But you're the records officer.
But we, I'm not that full of the records, I think they have to give the information.
Oh, really? So, if someone did a core request to you, you can't, you're not obligated because you don't, that paperwork doesn't belong to the county, it belongs, but isn't that a county entity?
Well, should, could I just ask Mr. Granzo for him, I'm a hospital board?
Yes.
Just to have one of them?
Yes.
Then I'm giving it to whoever, hell of a...
Okay. I know what the, what they wanna see now are the contracts. They wanna see the employment contracts, so that we know what the terms of the employment...
All sorts of documents, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, if you would ask, that'd be great.
Yeah, me either.
Hello?
How do you do? Are you on a break?
No, we're just discussing some unfinished business.
No, you're okay.
Unfinished business.
But you're better not to talk. No, I'm, I'm, what do you, you guys, no, what do you want to continue?
No, go ahead.
You guys come up, what do you want? I mean, what do you want, what are you doing here?
Okay.
No, I'm just joking, no, uh, do you have something you wanna speak about? Okay, go ahead.
I'm Lorelai Dole, you know Mike Crackey, we're here, I'm from Sylvan Grove, and we're here on behalf of the Sylvan Senior Center. The reason we're here is because we would like to request our 2019 mill levy. The reason is because the building we're in presently is falling apart. The, the, the property owner next door has not cared for her property, and the roof is caving in, and now it's compromised our property, and we can't get insurance. And so, we are trying to relocate to a new property, which we have purchased, the old farmer's elevator building in Sylvan, and we're trying to rehab it and make it really beautiful, restore it to 1930s look, and also put a senior center in there. We need about $36,000 for the roof project, and we got $18,000 from Post Rock Foundation Grant, a generous grant from them, so we're almost halfway to what we need to do this roof. But we're feeling that we need to do it immediately, because the roof is leaking and it's damaging the floor inside. So, we have money in our savings account to pay some of this and get the roofer and the mason started on the roof. However, our membership is a little hesitant to send away all our money when we don't have mill levy money, in case we should have some kind of an expense, or just to pay our utilities, phone, et cetera. So, I guess our feeling is that since it's mill levy money, it's already been paid, it's already been appropriated, I think our $24,000 budget has already been approved. It's halfway through the year. We would just like to have that money now, so that we can begin on this roof project at the elevator.
I might add to her, the building next to the senior center area has about a 20 by 30-foot area that's...
You can turn it off.
20 by 30-foot area is starting to collapse, and we can't control that building, they won't fix it. But our building is, stringers are all tied together, it's all one building originally. To add to that, at Hollywood, the American Legion Building, their roof collapsed last week. They've lost their building entirely. So, we're kinda in a dire need of getting things done so we can get moved. And we don't know, 48 and a half inches of snow last winter, is what I had in my place, and all the rain, I can't imagine what it looks like next door to us. But that's, the wall between us is not a structural wall, it exactly exists as a dividing wall. But that was all one building at one time, so that's our concern, we need to get moved as soon as we can. And we're looking at grants, and our hopes are that it will be, we'll generate some revenue also to backroom of that, for the community, to the seniors.
We had money donated to purchase the building, and along with that donation, we promised that we would repair the roof, or replace the roof and repair the masonry before we move forward with anything else, because we're just wanting to make sure the building's preserved first. And so, as I said, we're not opposed to using our own funds, we just don't want to completely drain our account and have nothing in there for paying our bills and running our business, you know, for activities we might wanna do with our, with our membership.
Well, how much funds do you have in there?
Uh, I don't know, about 20, 20-something, 25.
That would be all funds.
Yeah, and that's in, in our, in all of our accounts combined.
Didn't we give a distribution here, we gave you guys a distribution here a couple months ago?
What we did...
Yeah, that was Canada 29.
What we did this year, what we did this year so far is give out the remainder of the money that was withheld from 2018. So, in 2019, in a typical year, you would give about 60% of the budgeted funds that we've already taxed. We'd give about 60% in January, and then the rest, the remainder, 40%, about this time of year. When is the second issue? Oh, it was already in the, excuse me.
So, normally, we would have received...
So, we have not, we, we budgeted 100, or we budgeted 75,000, and did not give out any. So, we did receive last year a budget from both senior centers, and I guess the budget from the Council on Aging that was presented to us recently was from last year.
It is, but...
That wasn't for the fu, that wasn't going into the future, if I remember it correctly.
I don't think so, you guys haven't approved anything.
No, we haven't given out anything of that mill levy at all. So, we do have it sitting in the bank.
For, you know, for about 10 years, we've been just kind of doing fundraisers and going on our own, because we've had so much trouble getting our money from the LCCA. And now, we've gotten some money from the commissioners recently. But, we still, you know, we want to be able to use our mill levy money for what it was supposed to be used for, which was running our operation, and then be able to use this money we've been saving for this project. Because that's kind of, that's what our, that's what that account is called, projects. But we've never been able to use it for projects, because we've never had any mill levy. We've always been using it, you know, through the past years, just for operating. So, now that things are a little better, we're hoping that we could probably get our mill levy, and then we can use our project money for our project. And that's where we are. And like, I believe it's already been collected, right?
Yes, we already have.
So, it's just sitting there waiting to be distributed to the seniors for the senior program.
What do we do, two distributions, twice a year, or?
We do two distributions per year, which are already passed, so every other entity has got their money. Now, I had asked for Jennifer O'Hare to come to the commission with a legal opinion on what that money means. I mean, we, we already have, we're about to charge the citizens again for another line item for the, the senior mill levy, which can be up to two mils. But I wanted clarification on how that money is supposed to be spent, what it was original, what those original votes meant, because the, the public voted that in. That wasn't just the commission, you know, when we give money to like Central Kansas Mental Health or something, that's just the commission giving that money on our own authority. That was voted in by the public, so was the senior mill levy. So, I have requested the opinion on that. The problem that we have is, the three entities that have been receiving money from there, their budget requests for the current year, all total more than the 75,000. Do you see what I'm saying? So, I know in the past, in the past, the way that it was done was, the LCCA got the money, and they funded the entire, they funded the full budget for the Lincoln Senior Center, and then they gave the leftovers to the Sylvan Senior Center, after they spent about 40% of the entire budget on themselves.
Do we have an earmark now, who gets how much?
No.
We don't?
No.
We just have a chunk of money out there?
Yes.
And so...
And we have their budget requests, which between, I think Lincoln was at 35, and you were at 25, 24.
The Council on Aging.
I'm just guessing. So, we had 35 and 24, and Council on Aging...
60,000, I guess, if you take 25 and 35.
And the last one the Council on Aging brought to us was 21.
Is that, so they're all three together?
And see, that comes to 80,000, so we'd still be 5,000 short.
But I can tell you that...
These are the numbers that I remember.
And we go up them, we go up all three groups together in one...
It all comes out of the same...
One money.
Right.
So, Council on Aging, and then the Senior Center, and the Sylvan Senior Center, all come out of that.
Right, right. But I will say that we don't have to give the funds to these groups. I mean, that's been a choice of the commission. That's kinda why I wanted the opinion from Jennifer. Basically, someone can come in and request money for a senior service, that's what it's dedicated for. Now, the commission, in my opinion, needs to put stipulations on it. You have to be a 501(c)(3), or you have to be within the county, you know, there, there's no stipulation on the money right now, none. It's just, we collect it, the public voted it in, and they, in years prior, had given it 100% of it to the Council on Aging, who then decided how they would distribute it. So, instead of the commission doing it, they were passing it off to some other person to distribute it.
We take that responsibility right now from the Council on Aging, not, not to give them the money to split out to the senior centers.
And I personally am very much in support of both senior centers. My feelings on the Council on Aging are, are questionable, because I don't know that as a separate entity, it's serving a separate purpose. That's my personal view on it.
May I speak to that briefly?
Yeah.
The Council on Aging was actually, unfortunately, begun by a Sylvan person. She had been in Manhattan and had seen how their Council on Aging worked, and she wanted that for Lincoln County. But where she was, it was an advisory board. They had officers who did their work as officers, and they advised the, the senior centers, they advised seniors with questions, they didn't have much of a budget, they didn't have a paid employee. It was purely as an advisory capacity. And I think that what's happened in Lincoln County is that that LCCA has sort of hijacked the funds that should be going to the seniors, and they put them where it has no longer become an advisory board, it's become, I don't know what, I don't know what it is.
So, what I've noticed is, they repeat, or in the past, they were repeating a lot of the functions of the Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging.
And of both senior centers.
And the Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging is already funded by the state and federal government to do what it does. So, instead of Lincoln County calling them in from Salina and Manhattan, we kind of formed our own internal one, but then we were paying for it.
Twice.
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of a double-dipping concept, because there's nothing that they, there's nothing that we were doing locally that they can't do for us by asking them to come in and do it. And we ended up paying a physician that was performing the schick counseling, which you or I could do, you know, if you, if you so chose.
Well, it's supposed to be volunteer position, too.
That's what I meant, is anyone, I just meant anyone can do that. So, we ended up paying a heavy portion of the mill to provide that.
They do some extra functions, the Council on Aging does. I've been talking to Becky Rappman, she's taken that over now as director of that and the senior center in Lincoln. So, there's differences, she says, and she's learning more out of Council on Aging. But I don't know why that, we couldn't consolidate it.
I think, I think the idea, she was putting Becky under the senior center itself, was a better place.
She's over both, right now, director of both, and we're getting, and we, we fund both, and they both pay, so it's all...
I think it would make a lot more sense, if you wanna pay her twice, have her be the director of the Sylvan Senior Center and the director of the Lincoln Senior Center. LCCA can serve as an advisory board. She can work several days in Lincoln and several days in Sylvan and, and help us. You know, we need to help writing grants. We have all sorts of things now in Sylvan we're trying to move forward with, all with volunteer, mostly elderly labor. It would be great if we had someone over, over helping us, and that would be a much better use of that money.
That's true, I would say that in years past, you know, the, the Council on Aging has been paying someone separately from the senior center, but that person has not been serving those senior centers.
Not at all, absolutely nothing to our side of the county. And so, you know, if she had the position of being a director for each senior center, maybe come over to Sylvan two or three days a week, or three afternoons a week, then she would actually be serving the county's seniors. And, and that money would actually be going to where it would help people, instead of just sitting in savings accounts for the LCCA. And they've got a huge chunk of money right now, and they had much more. They just kind of were giving it away willy-nilly to spend it down, so it wouldn't look so bad. When here, we have a legitimate project where we desperately need money, and it's been pished away on god knows what, you know? So, we would really, I mean, I would, I think our seniors would really seriously look, if it wanted to be Becky, if she wanted to do it, or if somebody else wanted to come over and be a, a director over in Sylvan, that'd be a much better use of that money. And, and I'm not opposed to giving the LCCA, you know, a thousand dollars a year for, for, for postage, for letter writing, for research they might be doing into a certain project, but actually taking that mill levy money and letting the seniors use it. Now, that mill levy's all caught in overhead. It's like it's hanging with the CEOs and it's never filtering down to the people it's been given.
Well, it is, now, there's less, now, there's like forty thousand, or I know there's like, there was like ninety, and we, we just got a budget over, talked to Judy on, uh, they were gonna use-
They cut it down to twenty-one thousand.
They were gonna cut more, they're gonna cut that back.
Right, but what I'm saying is if they didn't have this employee, who I believe isn't necessary, if that employee was working for the senior centers instead of the LCCA, they could cut it back to a thousand.
Yeah, budget-
And you could put all that money to the seniors who need it, and who actually would do something with it.
But some of them will tell you that Sylvan would, should not get as much money as Lincoln area, because Lincoln goes through Barnard, Beverly, Westfall, and Lincoln, and you guys are a lot less population than that. If you want to go by population of who you serve, they're gonna say you're not supposed to, shouldn't get the same amount of money we get over here.
Well, I'd argue a couple things. One, Sylvan should get some because we didn't get it for a decade.
You'll get some, I can see you getting some, but not as much.
Another reason, we do have people who come from Vesper, and another reason is the Sylvan Senior Center is extremely active. Right now, we have coffee three days a week, we have exercise three days a week, we have quilting every week. We have, we just had a gentleman in who helped people write up advance directives.
I'm not against-
You know, they, they're, I feel like we are re, and I'm not saying Lincoln isn't, I don't know what all their programs are, but we are really serving the seniors.
Yeah, I'm sure you are, and I'm not against Sylvan's either. I'm just saying Lincoln has more, Lincoln has meals every day, for one thing.
But that's, that's not, that's not county funded.
No, I'm, I'm just saying though, what the, I'm just saying the services provided here.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there should be no money, and my, I mean, county money shouldn't be going to those meals, because that's-
No, it isn't.
The county money, well, in a way, in a way it is.
Well, it is, we find, yeah, we can help fund the Flint Hills Council on Aging, and that makes sense.
Well, we're subsidizing, we're subsidizing the payroll, but we're also paying all the overhead for that operation to happen out of that kitchen.
Yeah.
So we are paying the overhead to happen there.
Yeah, the county is using their money for that. And I'm not here to argue that the Lincoln Center, I, I, Lincoln seniors is great, I'm glad they get their money. I just want to make sure we get some money. And now especially, because it isn't just a matter of, gee, we can have a better quilting circle. We've got a building that's hanging on, that if we don't get in there in the next several, I'd say the next several months, that roof is gonna be collapsed and, uh, wear out. So we really need to get that building going, and I just, like I said, we're not even opposed to using our own funds. We just want our mill levy slush fund there, so that if something else comes up, we're not penniless, here begging because, oh my gosh, now we really have to have it, you know what I mean? And also, I also think, and I'm not speaking ill of the elderly, these, some of these are depression era people, they don't want to let go of this money and have nothing, because they're very worried about having nothing. They've been there, done that, and they don't want to-
They're worried about savings.
Yeah, they want to, they want to have something there.
Well, from what I've seen, there's not enough money for the senior center to complete the exterior of the new building.
Oh, that is not-
So therefore, you can't, you, the senior center's not gonna be able to self-fund moving into the other building.
Right.
Right, we can't do that. We, what we could do is get this roof on, um, we're gonna try to get the roof on, we have a meeting tomorrow, and the building committee tomorrow is going to go, Mike and I, we're on the building committee, we're gonna go to the membership and ask them if they would let us have, it's about eighteen thousand eight hundred and something, we need to finish the roof, so that we can get that roof to work now.
Yeah, we have the roof, and we have, when he exposes the roof, there's a parapet wall, if you're familiar with the parapet wall. You know what a parapet wall is?
What kind of?
The wall rises up above the flat roof.
It's an extension above, extension above the roof, and that was basically for, to prevent fires from neighboring buildings, but there's, when he exposes that wall with the roof, there may be some mortar work that needs to be done, so we have a mason who's supposed to take care of that. None of that can be done until the roof is lifted.
Exposed.
And I say the roof, there's like three layers of asphalt and then the TPO, that has to come off. And we got one bad leak by the old chimney that needs to be taken care of, and we'd like to get the whole roof done at the same time, I mean.
And then at that point, we'll need to, uh, we're going to really heavily, when we move the, get off the old roof, then we'll repair the parapet, then we'll very heavily insulate, and then we'll put on the new roof.
Now, as far as, uh, we look at the utilities, our building spaces will be like two point six two times larger. And originally, supposedly it cost a lot. I started looking at the utilities, I don't see them going up a lot. They'll be within reason. And our hopes are with the back space, it'll generate revenue to the senior center of rental space to keep everything operating.
How's the rest of the inside building and all that?
Oh, the build, it's good.
I heard you have a basement there, huh?
Yeah, there's a partial basement.
With water in it now, probably?
No.
No.
It did, it'd get moist at times, but see Kenny Small worked there for thirty years, he knows the building, and the walls, uh, the mason, masonry walls, they have a lot of mass, they're like eighty-
They're not caving in enough.
No, our mason told us he can't believe what good shape this building's in.
The foundations, foundations are all right.
No, it was built in nineteen thirty, because I looked it up in the register of deeds, it probably needed change in nineteen thirty. Originally, there was a fire there and burnt down what the wooden building was. And, uh, so this building came up in about nineteen thirty, thirty-one, and then, uh, our hopes are to put it back to its state it was and then use it as a senior center with a-
A venue.
A venue in the back for extra activities, ours and theirs, so that's our hopes. And preserve the building for the, well, we were, you know, some people, why don't you build a new building? Well, if you build a new building, where? This is on Main Street, this is handy.
Well, it preserves a historical building, it's a beautiful building. It's, it's all the post-rock limestone, and then the inside is a domed wood roof, which, or ceiling, which we're gonna leave. We've got a historical architect out of Wichita we think we're gonna work with, so it should be a gorgeous venue if, if we can move forward, if it goes as well.
But, uh, well, what's the situation with that, it's on, uh, we have that money there now as for this year, and do we have a, uh, an idea of what, what-
All, all we have are the budget requests. I, I want to say thirty-five for Lincoln, twenty-four for Sylvan, and twenty-one for LCCA. Those are the only things we have, and, and that is-
And that's what you have, what is their budget request, in twenty-five?
There is twenty-four.
Twenty-five would be great.
And you would like, and you would like to get half of that, like today, or?
No, I, I would like to get it all, because really, it was supposed to be distributed in February and May.
January and May.
So really, it should all be to us by now, and we could certainly use it all now. Um, and you, you know, I guess I would like to propose, this is my opinion, that the two senior centers be budgeted for the amount that they ask, and then you can decide what you feel is appropriate, you still have that chunk of money left for the LCCA. They have a chunk of money in savings that they could access if they actually needed it for something.
I know they have a twenty-five thousand dollar CD.
A CD.
Yeah, but I feel like, like Lincoln and Sylvan probably both could really use our budgets for our senior centers to move forward with things since they're-
My, my opinion is the senior-
Half a year behind.
My opinion is the senior centers are the ones who truly provide the senior services. And, uh, uh, that's, that's where the greatest benefit comes from.
Would you want to still give an opinion with Jennifer on all this?
Well, I, I look at it two ways. I mean, number one, I would like to get some clarification, I have asked for that months and months ago, but I would like to get some clarification for next year, so. I mean, I would like to help, that's where I stand personally. I would like to help. I would like to both, see both senior centers get all their money. I would like the LCCA to bring us a list of what they're actually going to do, because the budget that I saw for the LCCA is a fee to get bonded, a fee to file with the IRS, uh, their, their portion of the payroll taxes that they're gonna pay. Um, their, their separate phone line, their separate internet line, there's, you know-
Well, most of us took payback, actually, wages.
Well, the wages, though, I mean, we're already paying for that. I think, like they said, you could have wages pay-
Well, she's getting paid by the senior center, and-
Let's say she's getting-
And the Council on Aging.
But I'm sa, but, but the portion of that was like, what, twelve thousand? You could give six thousand to Sylvan and six thousand to Lincoln and say, you have to use that money to pay her to-
Serve by places.
Buy services for you at your end, at your-
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if Barnard wanted to do the same thing, I would support that. If, if, uh, Beverly wanted to do the same thing, I would support that. You give the money to the area where it's gonna be used, and then you put a stipulation on it. Here's the person that's hired, you know, you go ahead and contract, you could contract labor, someone like that, and pay them a ten ninety-nine and say, bring us a function once a week, bring us a function twice a month.
All right, I have a question. Couldn't you say that as the director of the LCCA, or the employee of the LCCA, her job is to work at these two senior centers, doing these different things? And we don't even have to contract her separately. Uh, you know, I'm not opposed-
Yeah, we could put stipulations on the money that we give to the LCCA.
Right, I'm not opposed to the LCCA having an employee, if I can see Sylvan getting any benefit out of it.
Right, right. The, the problem is, Randy, for years and years and years, the LCCA did whatever they wanted.
Okay.
And that, that person-
Mostly men, putting it to Sylvan.
Well, that, that person who worked there wasn't-
I know.
Producing anything.
I heard you.
There, there was no production, so the money was just being utilized to pay a payroll, and there was, I mean, there were maybe a dozen people that did want to use the Schick program, but they couldn't do that anywhere. We can call someone in from Manhattan tomorrow and say, could you come and do a Schick day? And they would come, you can send twelve people through there in a day.
We've got volunteers in Sylvan Grove who do Schick for nothing.
And we had, we had one come from Flint Hills Council on Aging, Karen Mays, she did our Schick at Sylvan this fall.
And see, it's interesting, because Karen Mays was there this entire time and never came here to do Schick, because we were paying someone to sit in the office to be able to do Schick.
But before we do any, uh, job changes, say for Becky Rappman, I would want to talk to her about any of this stuff.
Absolutely, yeah, we're just floating ideas. My main concern is that we want our budget.
And I think she does more for that LCCA than just for the senior center, there's more stuff they do provide, and that could maybe provide it for you guys, too. It should be for the whole county. The Link Council on Aging means that for Lincoln County, Council on Aging, that's for, that should already be serving Sylvan and Lincoln.
That's what we've been arguing for years.
But, but she's, but they'll say they are, they'll say the senior center, okay, that's serving just Lincoln seniors or the Lincoln, no, but that could be really anybody, too, but it's mostly Lincoln. But the Council on Aging should be supporting everybody, no, and, but I don't know how Becky's doing that now, I, I need to want to talk to her more about all this.
Yeah, I, I'm not proposing anything for them, I just, I'm trying to collect Sylvan's budget, so we can get our roof on.
Can I add one suggestion? Uh, okay, if you fund the senior center, both of them individually, uh, and if, and if you feel that the LCCA does not need that much funding, here's my thought. Vesper Community Center came in for a grant to the LCCA for their building for elderly, a door that was opening and all that. I think, rather than fund the LCCA a chunk of money, why not offer that people come forward here, ask for funding through the senior center-
For grants.
Rather than putting it in the LCCA's hands.
Right.
That's, that's a thought, to hold some reserve on the commission for those and seniors, other senior activities or whatever, that need something like-
And that would be a good way, too, to serve people who aren't Sylvan and Lincoln.
Yeah.
So people who from Vesper, Beverly, Barnard, can need something, to make something handicapped accessible, or, or to, or to serve their, a program for their seniors, could come here and ask for grant for so much money to do this project.
And that comes from directly, that's directly from the commissioners, and it's not being handed down to somebody else to making the decision. Because you have, you have multiple groups that come forward and ask for funding directly.
Well, I can liken it to the web committee, because the web committee has X amount of dollars to give out, they receive applications for the money based on certain criteria. You know, i- in the web fund, you have to be a government entity, you have to be a nonprofit, um, uh, non-religious affiliated nonprofit, and there's another, oh, and the schools, the schools can also ask. So in this case, we would have to identify what is a senior, you know, what constitutes sixty, an, an organization that has a majority of sixty and over, or the project that you're working on has to serve-
Benefit.
Right, because a lot of people in wheelchairs are usually seniors. So if you're trying to put in a wheelchair handicap ramp or something for a place, then that would benefit the seniors of, of that organization, but maybe it's a church, or, well, I guess it might not be a church, you can't do that, but, let's say it's a-
School.
It's a, right, a school, or a, right.
Or a senior center.
Right.
It's a community building.
So basically, you're saying just ban the Lincoln Council on Aging?
No.
No, I'm not saying that, he, he's just offering ideas.
No, I'm just saying, uh-
In other words, don't disband them, but take away all their money.
Well-
No, why couldn't the Council on Aging receive those applications and then disburse the money?
Right, that's what I see their job as being.
Why can't they receive applications, just like the web fund money?
Well, right now, most of their budget, like, what, do they want twenty-one grand? I think twelve grand of it, isn't it, to, that's Becky for, uh, the director of that, and they don't, and they, I, they, but so, but, but before, it was a lot more than that.
I know, I know.
But that's because they had a full-time person.
But Becky does, that, that job along with senior center job, and I don't know, I, I want to visit with her more, what's, how they separate. Maybe you got good ideas, but before I want to go ahead with, hey, just take away all the money from them, I want to make sure-
Well, I also think, you know, something that the LCCA spoke to us about, which never happened, they wanted to have representatives from the LCCA, from the Lincoln Senior Center, from the Sylvan Senior Center, and maybe even representatives from the community, like the city councils, sit down and talk about how the LCCA could serve Lincoln County, what we saw as the problems, what we thought could be improved, what, how we thought they could be used. That meeting never came to pass, but I think that would be an excellent, if you're saying you want to investigate further.
Well, I'm gonna go with Becky and see what she's doing now and how that's going, and, and they, she's, right now, she's, they've hired her as director of it and of Lincoln Senior Center, so she should know the different differences between them, and maybe if they could be combined, or if Sylvan could be combined with them all. I can, we could have one, Lincoln Council on Aging run everything, I know, of course, senior center gets Flint Hills money, and that's separate because they got food, so that's separate then over here.
Right.
We got, it's amazing how many, Lincoln County has three or four of all these different agencies working for seniors.
Right, well, we have a lot of seniors.
Yeah, but about, you need four agencies for a county of three thousand people.
Right, you're right.
The other thing, too, is, uh, I consider the senior centers' action committees, I consider the LCCA to be a solution to me, because the, whatever solutions they come up with, the, the actions are done by the senior centers. One of the things I brought up when I was on the LCCA was the idea of, okay, like, Westfall, Barnard, Beverly, whatever, they don't have a senior center, but why not offer maybe one evening, a week?
Go to their-
Pink's and Iger, whatever.
Well, they, they drive to Lincoln.
What's that?
You know, they got cars now.
Yeah, but there are people there who don't, who can't or wouldn't, especially in the winter when it's dark. Might like to have their activity in their town.
If you go to Westfall, you might have five people or two people.
Yeah.
Too small.
Two, yeah, it's big enough to deal with all that. I'm not, I'm trying to, in my opinion, I would like to consolidate things. But I know seniors that live in south of Westfall maybe can't get here, or you'd like to help them too. But you can't just, whatever.
Well, the consolidation in my mind, right now, looking at the budget, the way that it was presented to us, you know, a fee to belong to, to have a nonprofit, a fee to have.
Yeah, I can see that.
You know, I mean, they're.
I know what you're saying.
The separate phone line, all of that, it's, if, if we're going to consolidate, we have to demand the consolidation. If we're not, then we have to determine what is the best use of these funds. If we took away the salary and gave it to Sylvan and Lake, Luke, Lincoln, and they were gonna just pay Becky, right? Then what's, what purpose does the LCCA serve?
Nothing.
See, that would be my dream, to see the LCCA, if they continue to exist, be used in advisory capacity without a big budget. And then to use that money that's been used for savings to, to get directors to work at the senior centers.
Elderly ladies there running that, and I'm afraid if we tell them that, they're all gonna cry and go run away.
I think a lot of them would breathe a sigh of relief and go home and do something productive. I haven't talked to anybody there who's thrilled to be there, nobody.
I've been to a committee of those meetings and.
I respectfully disagree.
No.
There are some that they can't.
I know at one time, I've been, I know a lot of people quit because they couldn't stand it.
If you disband that, there are gonna be some ladies who wanna come after me with a gun.
Yeah.
No, I, I think the group that's there now wants to do good things, but I don't think they know what to do. And here's the problem, there has been so little communication with the area agency on aging out of Flint Hills that they don't know what the purpose is. And when, um, the director of that area agency on aging came here to speak with us, remember, uh?
Yeah.
Her ma- her name is just, I can't.
Karen Mays.
No, the other one, her boss, Karen Mays's boss. When she came here, Julie, Julie, uh, Julie. When she came here to explain her budget request to us, I got a chance to talk to her in the hall. Most of all the other councils on aging, they have someone that attends the meetings, goes to Flint Hills, goes to other places, comes back to their county and distributes information. You know, we have kind of, in Lincoln County, created an internal, right, an internal council that doesn't go out and get information and bring it back. So that's the, the part that we're missing, and if they don't want to do that, I'm not sure what, what the purpose is there. I know they wanted to start doing some housekeeping and things like that, but I don't know that our public money is to be spent that way. I mean, I just, that's kinda why I asked Jennifer to come to the table with some, some legal opinions on the, the expenditure of that money, because the, the mill levy, it actually says programs. So if we were gonna take it literally, it would be, we have to give the money to the program, not to the building.
Right, or to a employee.
Especially not an employee. I mean, you know.
I don't think that's even how it's meant to be used.
Right, we may, I mean, we may not even be able to give the money to the LCCA so that they can hire someone. We're giving the money to Lincoln Senior Center so that they can hire people, subsidize their paychecks. I mean, to me, that's not a program, but at the same time, I support the senior centers, so I don't mind looking at a budget and saying, we're gonna give you ninety percent of it, or we're gonna give, you know, because we want you to facilitate programs. But there's a lot of trickiness in the wording to that that kinda concerns me. It also concerns me that we just don't even have the original resolution.
And my, my thoughts are that, uh, if you're funding senior centers alone, the mill levy money doesn't need to be as high as it is taxation. It, it could go down.
The other thing you can do is investigate what the other, um, council on agents in this area are doing, and nobody's doing what we're doing.
No, actually, I spoke to the Ellsworth woman, and she, her position, she works for the Council on Aging for Ellsworth, okay? But she is charged with doing all of the bus transportation, so it would be like as if Jerry was working for the Council on Aging. It's a, it's two positions that they're paying as one. So we have our own bus and we have our own employment down at the Council on Aging, but in Ellsworth, it's one position.
And a lot of places have volunteers doing it. Uh, you know, to me, a good, a good.
Actually, instead of, cause they don't, they have extra bus drivers, but they're much bigger, but that's. He, he who is doing the scheduling is also doing, taking the phone calls for the Council on Aging in Ellsworth. That's how it works.
And to me, a good step, instead of just giving them money for employee, would be to find out what these other employees or volunteers at these councils of aging are actually doing. And make sure that our employee is doing all of those things that they're doing in these other places, if possible. Because I think in the past, it's just been a big old salary for nothing.
Well, in the past, it was funding an office. It was funding an office where anybody could go there, but how did you know what to do there or, or what you were. It was expected to be, right, it was basically all voluntary. If, we're gonna pay to keep this office open, these office hours, so that in case anyone comes, it's there.
Right.
It wasn't really an outreach program where that person was going around soliciting things or offering things.
Or coming to Sylvan at all.
No, not at Sylvan.
And the other thing that would go along with that is just that the, I, I mean, I, I guess I just see that I have no problem with having a Lincoln County Council on Aging, but I think that needs to be completely revamped so that they have a purpose. And so that we know that purpose is being served, because another thing that bothered me was they have officers, but they had an employee typing up minutes, balancing the checkbook. Well, then why do you need an officer? It is not the job of that person to do those jobs. That's why that person's elected. And so I really want to see that stopped, if it hasn't been stopped already, because that's downright dangerous to have your employee running all the financial business.
Well, that's true. The board was hiring the employee to do the board's job, the treasurer's job, the secretary's job, the president's job. That is definitely what happened, and I will take it a step further. The most recent bylaws actually exclude the commission from appointing their board members. So now they are no longer a quasi-governmental agency.
So why would the parent give them any money?
Well, I mean, they could technically request it as a five oh one C three, just like you are.
Right, but it wouldn't be an automatic.
But it's not, it's not the same as it was where, when we, like, we appoint the hospital board members. So we have direct control over that. Without appointing their board members, I don't believe their books are open anymore. So when you don't have an appointed board by a governmental agency, you don't have to share your finances. That poses a concern for me, because I think if we're going to, if they're, if they're solely surviving on county funds, they should be an open records function entity. I mean, they have no other sense, source of income. That concerns me too.
If not, then they need to start fundraising like everyone else for their income.
The other thing too is, uh, like Eldred, you mentioned, I know the Eldred County Council on Aging lady director, she did not involve herself with the senior centers at all. They were totally separate from each other. She had an office in the senior center, Eldred, but they operate on their own and et cetera. Now, I've been to Mitchell County Council on Aging. How they handle their funding is, the tenth of every month, electronic deposit goes to each senior center automatically.
From the commission?
From the, no, from the Mitchell County Council on Aging.
So the council does have money there and they give money.
Was volunteer, took no pay. That's Mitchell County.
But why are they doing a monthly?
Uh, I guess convenience wise, they just.
So are they doing the books for them?
What's that?
Or is that person keep track, keeping track of the senior centers' books?
He's the treasurer, yes.
Oh, so they're paying to have their book done?
No, I don't, I don't, no, I don't start paying anybody. The treasurer, everybody on the board's volunteer. The treasurer does, the treasurer of the board is the one who, I talked to him personally, he does electronic transfer every tenth of the month.
But is he keeping the books for the senior centers?
No.
Oh, oh, that's what I.
He is for the LCCA.
He just, their council.
Make sure the money goes out, dispersed as it's supposed to be.
That's the difference between, I don't know how often Eldred's goes out. They, they get their money directly from.
The commission.
Commission, senior centers, council. They come directly from the commission. And they don't have, theirs comes out of a general fund. They don't have a senior tax deal.
It's a, yeah, it's an allocated amount that they choose.
Yeah.
My point is just that since the LCCA really doesn't seem to know what their purpose is or how to make it happen, it might be good to investigate what people around us in rural counties are doing. And then sit down and look at that and see exactly what they could be doing.
I have suggested to LCCA board members to do that. I said, why don't you talk to the Ellsworth woman and bring her here and explain to us, it, that would legitimize their purpose if they said, well, we're gonna do what she does and, and this is what she does, you know? But I haven't seen from, heard from anyone.
I think she's there from nine to two. That's her hour.
Yeah, she's part time.
Fifteen hours a week. So I think it's fifteen, no, it's thirty. She, she gets thirty. And I figured on the population basis of Eldred County versus Lincoln, it justifies fifteen hours here, past what they are. Cause city of Eldred is as large as the whole county of Lincoln County, in population wise. That's just, and that came when I was on the.
So what do we wanna do today? We need to move on to other stuff here. Uh, well, we had to have their money access or not? They want twenty-five thousand bucks, is that what it is?
I, I had.
Or do you wanna, you wanna?
I don't have our budget from last year, but, uh.
You guys got a deadline you need this quick, or can you wait a month or what?
We'd like to have him working this week if we had money.
We have, uh.
Well, we should probably have more time to review this. Coming in and asking for it today.
I guess I don't understand why, because number one, it's already been collected. Number two, it is earmarked for senior services. Number three, it's already past due. We should have received the entire amount by now. Um, I guess I don't see why we can't have that. That's, that meets all the stipulations of.
You got any issue with that?
I, I don't. I want to see us do something differently moving forward. So when we do this next budget next month, I really wanna have this stuff figured out. If you wanna distribute these dollar amounts to these three organizations who have requested them for this particular year, we have five thousand, not enough.
My question is, why do we have to decidle free? Why can't you distribute to the two senior centers now? And then discuss what's going to happen with the LCCA. It's only, like you say, the new budget's coming up in a month. And to me, the senior centers are doing the work. The senior centers are providing the services. You know, we're getting the people in there, we're going to help them in their homes, we.
Yeah, I'm not arguing now that, I mean, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I just don't know if we should wanna do it right now in the process right now.
I, I would just.
It's already passed due.
I would just suggest fund the two senior centers, the deliberations over the LCCA. That's the deliberation I see.
Well, we did talk with Lincoln Senior Center the last time they were here, and they said they didn't, they never got the remainder of their budget last year. So we did give that to them. Um, we didn't, we didn't not approve, I should say it in that way.
Hold your stuff.
We did not, we didn't refuse the budgets that were presented. We did ask for revision of the budget by the LCCA, which they did. And that still leaves us five thousand short if we give full approval of the senior center budgets.
I guess my question would be, did the LCCA budget show exactly how they were gonna spend that entire twenty thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you felt they needed twenty thousand?
Well, my.
We don't approve it, yeah, really. They just did it there.
Yeah.
I know you guys have been discussing this for a while, but you really need to have it on the agenda where other parties.
Can be present.
Ability to come and comment to.
Well, what happened was, we just realized, we got our post-op foundation grant, realized it's half of what we needed. So we said, all right, let's go get our budget, and we'll have the other half of what we need. And that's, that's why we came now.
Could you be on the agenda next week where other people could review it with you?
Well, the thing is, tomorrow is our meeting, and tomorrow we wanna ask them if we can have that money. But I don't think they're gonna be excited to give it to us if they know there's nothing in reserve.
The Post-op Community Foundation's gonna give it.
No, our, our, our membership. We have to get the second half from our membership. And I think if we had our budget, they'd be fine with it. I think without our twenty nineteen budget, they might drag their feet. And we don't meet then again for another month. So if we wanna start, you know, get our roof recalled and get our mason called and get started this week, this month, then we, we need it now.
But they can call a special meeting.
Can we say?
We need terms, eh?
Can, can we, can we give them the assurance that we're gonna move on this?
Yeah.
In a week.
Yeah.
And it may not be one hundred percent of your budget request from two thousand nineteen.
What, what's their request, twenty-four?
Okay, but I, I can give my assurance that I'm gonna be voting to approve your budget and, and disperse the funds. I feel that way about both senior centers. I'd still like to see some deliberation on what is going to be attached to the money that's given to the LCCA, especially the fact that we're not appointing their board anymore. But then again, it's last year's money, so last year, last year's budgeted money. I think if we, if we can tell you that you can tell the seniors, look, you, you need to spend X amount of dollars out of everything you have saved, which is gonna leave you with not very much, but you know your next budget is coming, then maybe that'll give them the confidence that they can move forward with expenditures, and then next week, we'll put it on the agenda. Hopefully, a representative from each place will come, and then we'll distribute.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But I would, I mean, has Jennifer returned any of those questions about, I mean, she ha- I mean, she hasn't corresponded with you about coming on that topic. I'm just wondering if we're ever gonna hear about that, because that's been months ago.
I don't know, do you do, ask her again?
Yeah, I'll send an email.
Just put her on the agenda next week.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send her an email.
So can we tell them that we'll have it in, by the end of the month, by the end of the week, by when, when are we talking, we might get it?
I think next week we'd probably approve it.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, I think we can, if they know it's coming, I think they'll vote for this. So thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
We appreciate the time.
Yep, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Careful on your way out. Thanks for letting us crash. I didn't realize you were in the middle of a conversation when we came in.
Oh, that's all right.
Thanks.
With any consolation, I haven't even yet either, Randy.
Well, we got more stuff to do here. Do we wanna deal with this time card, uh, next session?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm writing, I want your permission, just at least verbally, I'm going to request from Mr. Granzo that he give us those last three years of the cash balance statements. And that includes the yearly rollover that we were talking about that didn't come with the budget.
That's fine, I don't know.
And then the, um, the copies of the provider contracts, just so we see what they are getting paid out of the new increased budget. Okay.
Yeah, I'll tell him I approved it.
Okay. I'm just gonna say the Board of County Commissioners respectfully requests that you provide us the last three years of cash balance statements um, in the contracts. Okay, that's done, and I did send a message to EMS director about what we'd like to see happen.
Yeah, for him.
And he did say back about sending a letter to the board that he is now on the job, which Dawn, you already know that. You're gonna, you're going to take care of that part, correct? To the EMS board? Okay.
About what EMS board about?
We have to notify the state board that we do now have a.
Director?
And she said she'll take care of that. I already sent the message about the things we talked about.
Texted her.
The inventory, the getting the, the new schedule done, the license transfers, and the new MD for the.
And what'd he say?
He, he'll, he's on it. He said, he said, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, we're on the same, yeah, good.
Um, so the time clock is the last thing on the agenda. Is there anything else you wanted, before we go into executive session, is there anything else you wanted to touch on?
No, I'll take that.
How do you want to do this? Do you want me to come back with something? Because we also need to approve the amendments made to the director of EMS's, uh, job description.
What did we make for the amendment to the EMS, how to do it?
Um, it's what, it's something we did at the end of the year before you came in.
For Derek's job?
Get some consultation from him. Yeah, I didn't mean approval right now. I just meant that's on the table.
Why don't we wait on that?
Okay.
But on this, why don't you put together what you like, okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it, I'll bring it to the table and you can change it, if you wanna do it that way.
And I agree with you on.
Combining this.
I don't, yeah, I want to do that.
How much time are we blocking off for this? Cause you talked for an hour and a half with just two people. So how long are we going, do you want block off for?
For?
Council on Aging? For senior services?
I think a half an hour.
What, exactly, on the time clock stuff?
Yeah. No, 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 if we, if we have them come next week.
Well, I don't wanna get into a discussion on how to revamp the whole senior center.
Then fifteen minutes.
When Lincoln Council on Aging will go on and on and on for, like we did for an hour and a half, and we were talking about re, uh, organization. That's, that should be almost a special thing.
Okay, then fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
Because like today we get going and she's, they get saying we should split up the Council on Aging and have Becky go to Ellsworth, Sylvan, and, you know.
Well.
And I'm not against, I'm not against the discussion, it's just that, I, I'd like to get Becky here, or I'd like to talk to her first, to get all the, you know, have a, have a lot of the same people involved that's gonna be dealing with this stuff. And know exactly what jobs that Council on Aging does do, different from senior center. Maybe they could be consolidated.
No, I don't want to.
I'm not against Council on Aging, but, but, uh, I, I agree what you're saying. What did they accomplish, really?
I just wanna know how long to block off.
Fifteen minutes.
Because we've talked for an hour and a half now on that, and that's how the schedule happens.
I know, I'm sorry, no. For next week, you mean, about fifteen minutes? Cause I think we'll approve the better budget and then I'll be happy.
And Dawn, we spent plenty of time over discussing other things as well, so it's part of the job.
But that's why, that's why I'm wanting to know.
I know you're frustrated.
No, I just wanna know how long to block off.
Fifteen minutes for next week, so that we can.
If we're gonna talk for an hour and a half, I wanna block off if that happens.
I know, I know, I know.
Well, we did a plan on it. I guess we.
But I just, I, I appreciate you being willing to stay, because things do come up, and when they're not.
Oh, I don't mind.
When they're not thoroughly discussed, that's how we get ahead of ourselves and make bad decisions. So I do appreciate that.
But we gotta lock, control the discussion, so, or some people go on for till midnight.
I know, and that's my fault, because I'm supposed to cut them off. I am, I'm supposed to cut them off. I'm the.
Well, but, no, I'm not blaming you for nothing. It's just, uh, we're interested in this stuff. It's just that with all the issues we got, we gotta be concise on them, and, and maybe then if we wanna rediscover them, we can block off time like that.
Would you mind if I just go ahead and ask to be able to email the new EMS director the job description that we've once revamped and see if he wants to make new changes? That way, we pa- we bypass a whole discussion.
That's fine. He's just coming in the office, so I don't know if he'll have a lot of input. Maybe he will.
I think he does.
Well, he's done the job at other places. I don't know why we care about the job description for the EMS now that much, uh, at this point in time.
Because we want to make sure that, cause he is now, he is now under salary to perform all those functions.
Okay.
So we wanna make sure those functions are laid out on paper.
Okay.
And, and, yes.
That's fine. I'm not a, against it.
Okay.
And I'm blocking off an hour, or a half an hour for John Grace, right?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay.
And we're gonna go to time clock stuff, right?
Yes, so we needed to hear a few things in executive session, just because of personnel issues.
Yeah.
Um, and then determining some priorities there. So I, I'll go ahead and move. I moved to recess into executive session for fifteen minutes for the purpose of discussing time clock department head expectation. time clock department head expectations, justification pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen-two B, number one, personnel matters, to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with the commission and the county clerk as acting HR.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye. Aye, motion carries. Station.
Um, well, the supervisor has to go in and enter that time, and then it will date stamp when it was entered, and it will date stamp what it is that they put, and then you also can put a note.
Let's say it's three o'clock, you're not done till four thirty, but you leave for your meeting and you're there until seven. So if you just go home after that, you'd have no clock out for the day. Can you go in the next morning and clock out and clock back in? And then you just adjust the.
You can clock.
Till seven P.
Yeah, you can clock out. We should, I can't remember if we turned on the clock in and clock out. Uh, but it won't let you do one until you do the other.
So you'd have to clock out, then clock back in, then you go back in and you say, oh, well, the clock out time was not eight AM, it was seven PM.
Yes.
And you can switch that, but the supervisor has to do it. That way the employee can't do that and say, so if they forget to clock out, they have to go to their supervisor and say, this is what time I forgot to clock out.
Right.
And the supervisor has to go in, because they'll come in the next morning, clock out, clock in, and then, okay, I forgot to clock out yesterday at four thirty. So the supervisor goes in and fixes it from the prior day to four thirty. So they should have to report that the immediately, the following business day?
Yes, and, or it leaves it blank. I will ask him for sure which, which direction we went, and there was a reason why we chose one of the other. Or it will leave the spot blank, and then the supervisor goes in and clocks it.
To fix the clock out time. Maybe that's more appropriate.
I think that's what we decided to do, um.
Because you're, you're gonna have people that just go to clock in at eight, and then it looks like a clock out. And then it screws up the whole next day, because it didn't start, it just finished one, and then it didn't start the next one, then you have no time recorded. Let's do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably smarter.
So, yeah, so, so they can still, you can still have employees that come in and, like, let's, let's use the janitor, for example, and there is snow. He'll clock in and he'll clock out when he's done. The outlying people, or like, um, the emergency manager, for example, if he's at, at his home and there's weather coming through and he's weather watching, then he'll come in and modify his time manually, and then, um, write a note as to what it is. And then at the end of the time period, then we print a time card, and you guys will sign off on your department heads, which I don't know why we haven't had you guys do that in the past, but, um, and the employees will sign off on their time cards, the printed copy of it, so. That's kind of the gist of it.
Sounds good, sounds like you get.
I'm gonna make a motion, though. Let's, let's just establish the hours now, that way before the time clock system's actually initiated.
What are hours are you gonna?
It's eight to four thirty.
For everybody?
Yes.
Unless, except for the exceptional period we.
Do you want me to get each department and then have you do it next week?
No, because I'm gonna say.
I think the health department needs four thirty.
Well, like the highway.
You need to make sure.
Well, like the highway department now is a ten-hour deal, so.
But I'm, I'm just gonna do courthouse.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you're just doing.
I move to establish courthouse department office hours as eight to four thirty, eight AM to four thirty PM.
Okay, I'll second.
If there is no further discussion, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then I, I move to require written documentation of all hours outside of regular office hours.
I'll second the motion.
So just in the discussion, I'll, I'll just make a comment that we are talking about offices that are in the courthouse right now. Because we have other outlying departments that we'll address separately, but this is for the courthouse, all employees in the courthouse. Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, and none opposed.
Should we make it?
So basically, that means that everybody here, because we're installing the new time clock system, everyone here has to clock in at eight and clock out at four thirty, unless they have hours outside of that for a particular purpose, which they will then document in writing, so it can be attached to their time card in their employee file.
Should we do it?
We need to do John Paul.
Should we give an exception to the elected officials, like, uh?
We don't.
Treasurer?
Are you even gonna clock in? You're not gonna clock in?
No.
No, elected officials won't even clock in.
Elected officials won't clock in or out?
No.
What, what do they do then? Do you do a time card on for yourself, or does Leanne, Bishop, how do they?
Their salary.
Or salary.
Oh, you're salaried now, so you don't.
So they just get a paycheck.
Right, they just get a paycheck, okay.
So, but you'd have to document overtime.
We may, may want to document that, that electives. We may state that somewhere, that elected officials do not have to follow this, cause they're salaried.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, for general public.
Yes, yes. Okay, so let's do, um, janitorial hour, okay, I move to establish janitorial regular hours of five thirty AM to two PM. With a half, cause that includes a half hour.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to establish the regular hours of the janitorial duties from five thirty to two PM, five thirty AM to two PM. Is that right? All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries. Okay, so, that being said, we do know that there will be exceptions, but the, the requirement is that when there is an exception for these people.
That's normal hours.
That, those are their normal hours, but when there's an exception, because there's a snow or a tornado or whatever happens.
Right.
They will put it in writing, that way it can be documented and paid for.
Documented why there was an exception, and the hours that were, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Do we want to end with that? Are you gonna do highway department or sheriff's department yet?
Well, okay, so.
We don't know that yet.
Well, but until, until the weather changes in the fall, the highway department is, what did we say, six to?
Well, they're eight, ten-hour days.
I think they're six thirty to four, so. Or to five. Six thirty to fives.
Is that what they're gonna clock in and out then? And then when we go back to regular hours, would it be in the fall?
It'll go back to eight to four thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, six thirty to five was the half an hour.
Okay, so I move to establish the summer regular hours of the highway department as six thirty AM to five PM. Huh? Um, until.
Till we go back to.
Yeah, until, um.
For the two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Summer, summer schedule.
Thank you. Please add that to the motion.
And next year we'll determine that then.
Do you want a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded to establish the normal hours of operation for the highway department currently in the summer schedule from six thirty AM to five PM. And this also establishes that if there are hours outside of that that are needed, they will be documented for purpose. Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Now, do we want to put a call in down to the health department to make sure it's eight to four thirty? Is it on their website?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She gonna do.
Otherwise I can go and pull the chat.
So, we, we don't really need to do anything for the EMS, because it's twenty-four seven. So we will, as they clock in and clock out, it will just show if it's six o'clock to six o'clock. Yeah, and they don't have to document overtime, because we know that they're expected to have a forty-eight hours.
We just require them to clock in and clock out. That a mandatory thing to do. Where they're now, they're just signing the time clock, right, yeah. And did we want to, like, do the motion for the health department and?
Yes.
For the.
Yeah, we already took care of the courthouse.
We should have probably talked to her about that, if you'd heard of that.
Well, I mean.
That's just why it is.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
It shouldn't be that big a deal.
If they have hours outside of that, they need to just document it. That way whoever's doing.
We're not against deviating the schedule, cause we know things happen.
Right, but that's not the idea. It's to set the, it's to set the regular hours.
The standard policy.
Because it can't be every week, someone fifteen minutes early, fifteen minutes late, fifteen whatever, yeah.
And if they start to abuse it, we can know it, because I know, then we'll bring that up to them.
Right.
Little baby's sure growing up.
Yes, it happens fast, right before your eyes.
He running around, I'll, he'll be right after you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so did we cover all the departments after we did our department?
Well, not the sheriff's department.
We don't need EMS. Sheriff's Department's twenty-four seven, and they're under an elected official technically. Courthouse hours, we established as eight to four thirty. Um, who are we missing? Oh, oh, landfill.
Landfill.
But they have different hours, um.
They, I don't know when they open up there, eight in the morning?
I, I wonder if that's on the website too, to verify that with Dawn, because they also have a Saturday day. But that's part-time, so whenever that person clocks in and clocks out will be.
Eight to four thirty.
Okay. I move to establish the regular working hours for the health department to be eight thirty, eight AM to four thirty PM.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. The discussion is that, once again, as I motioned earlier, all hours outside of regular office hours should be documented in writing. Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Dawn, the highway departments, I mean, the, the landfills.
Landfill, no, yeah, I mean, uh.
Noxious weed.
We, noxious weed department.
I believe they are, um, eight to, I should put it, eight to four thirty as well.
But we also have a Saturday, right?
Yes.
So how do we wanna?
That is eight to four.
In the summer.
In the summer, and then in the winter time, they don't.
Does that mean no half hour break, or what does that mean for eight to four?
That means he doesn't get lunch, it's straight through.
Cause it's not before eight hours, it's seven and a half, so then there's no paid lunch on Saturday.
Eight to four would be eight hours.
They shut down in the winter and noon, don't they?
But then you have to give a half an hour of paid lunch.
Well, we just pay them. I mean, he probably eats at some point in time, but.
He's there still, technically working, if somebody drives in, they gotta.
I can get that, go get those hours too. I should grab them all, sorry.
I'm gonna look on the, is it on the highway, or is it on the?
Well, I thought it was. And normally they're supposed to be closed to the public from eight to nine, so that they can, um, smash and.
Yeah, it's not on here.
Pile and all of that good stuff, but.
Do you mind if I ask Hannah to add that to the?
No, that is.
Website?
We have a sign of, can scan it and add it. Hi, Lottie.
Yeah, we don't have any hours on there.
Rescue staff.
Yeah, sure.
Randy must have taken a break.
He did, he just walked out. But go ahead, tell me what was it?
Okay, their state, the transportation hours are nine to four, so the public is, that's for the public, so eight to four thirty is their hours.
Okay.
On Monday through Friday, and then nine AM to one PM on Saturday, so it would be.
Even now, where it's not till four? Or is that summer hours?
That's, um, let me call out, make sure. That's their summer hours, or that's their winter hours, nine to one is their winter hours.
Yeah, and then summer, I think we just said is nine to four. They don't start out there at eight, though, right?
Well, you know, I'm not sure with their, I should have grabbed their time card, hang on. Three, three oh two. I'll see if that's right. Hey, this is Dawn. What is your guys' Saturday hours? Nine to four? And Jerry, or, sorry, um, Miller, he comes in at nine o'clock, or does he come in at eight? Okay, thank you. Well, they're gonna, they're setting the department heads, or, not the department heads hours, but the department hours formally, so that I can build a schedule on the time clock system.
Clocking.
My important is, uh, their hours starting.
Okay, I'm gonna send Derek the job description, so that if he has any suggestions, he can tell us what he wants changed.
You're gonna do, you're gonna remember that iPad on your, I don't know, figure that out, but it's quick. Okay, thanks. Okay, he said nine to four on Saturdays and he comes then. He actually comes a little early, but.
Yeah, but that's the scheduled, yeah. Okay, so I move to establish the regular hours for the landfill Monday through Friday, eight AM to four thirty PM. Saturday summers, nine AM to one PM. Saturday winters, winters, how do I wanna say that? Saturday summer hours, Saturday, Saturday summer hours, nine AM to one PM. Saturday winter hours. I said that backwards. Saturday summer hours, nine AM to four PM. Saturday winter hours, nine AM to one PM. Did I get it right that time? I'm sorry.
But when does summer start and when does winter start? They normally come and ask them when they start slowing down on Saturdays. Gotcha.
According to the traffic, okay, so do you, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded to establish those as the regular hours for the landfill, and again, documenting any hours outside of that timeframe in writing. Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries.
Oh, um, noxious weed.
Yeah, do you know what that is?
It's the same as the.
Same as the landfill?
Okay.
I probably could have thought you did.
That's okay, that's okay, it's, it's, then it's set. I, oh, but do, they don't do Saturdays?
No, they don't.
Okay, so I move to establish the regular hours for the noxious weed department as eight AM to four thirty PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries.
I should have thought about this for the courthouse. Uh, we're gonna have a problem with the transportation bus, but I don't remember, so you said the hours is eight to four thirty for the courthouse, but his hours are eight to five? Based upon what they submitted to the state, and I don't remember now off the top of my head.
Well, let's just make a separate motion for him.
Okay.
So I move to establish transportation bus department hours as eight AM to five PM.
I'll second.
And he doesn't do any overtime outside of the hours.
He doesn't do, they don't do Saturdays or nothing, do they, Dawn?
No, there has been a couple of occasions where they have, you know, been caught in saliva and.
Well, then again.
The doctor's going lower.
Yeah.
Now, if they go over there.
They can't make it back in.
Well, then again, right on the exception that, uh, document, there's an exception to that time document, why and that, just like we got with the others.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. How about the sheriff's department?
They're twenty-four seven.
They're twenty-four seven, EMS is twenty-four seven, so really it's just according to how, if someone's late getting, getting there to their shift, then the other person that's covering for them probably doesn't clock in and out until late.
And they're, and they're, and the sheriff will set the schedule for the individuals, right?
Yeah.
And that's not up to us on times and none of that. So they're just kinda on their own. As long as they use a clock-in system, we don't want them to clock in and clock out.
Yeah.
Otherwise, okay? All right. Same way EMS.
Yes.
Yeah.
I will work this week to see if I can't get those. I will work this week to see if I can't get those policies. Hold down and get some find the one that fits us or a combination of them to fit us. And then um maybe give them to you guys on Thursday for you to do some homework and look at and then on Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
What are these now you're talking about again, I'm sorry.
Policies for the time clock so then that way it's.
It's a countywide policy.
Oh, okay.
Basically, one of the policies is that our motions, these are the times and then. The other motion about if you have time that you're putting in outside of those regular business hours, it has to be documented. That way whoever's putting in the time so that you get paid on your. Check, they know why and it wasn't just a misca- calculation with your clocking system.
That sounds good.
The other thing that we had on the schedule for last year that we never did was to go over the handbook. And it has not been revised in quite a few years, I'd say like five or more years.
I looked it up yesterday based on mileage paying to commissioners driving to and from it's already says in the handbook that. Employees will not be paid mileage driving to and from their residence to their work, but it says employees now.
Elected officials aren't employees.
Officials that we could put in there, I don't know if you and I wanna prove this that that includes elected officials also. We can add that.
Do any other elected officials put in for mileage?
Not to work.
I mean to to meetings, I don't have.
Well, the meetings, yeah, we we all understand.
It's an extra expense on yourself to go to meetings.
That's what mileage is for going above outside of your normal job.
Right.
And uh like if when we go to our conferences, obviously that's should be allowed but. Which maybe edit the handbook I'd be for that, I don't know about you.
I would.
Cause I I agree on the policy, I don't think commissioners should get paid driving to and from here.
Well, what it does is it it inhibits our budget from allowing more expenses for education. I would rather put that money toward someone attending an educational seminar.
Yeah, I agree too, the only reason I participate, I don't know if you saw on Facebook, only reason I approved Al Jones cause approval previously it had that policy where we did that. And I just was going with that, but I do agree, I don't like that.
Well, in your defense, you were not here.
Yeah.
At the. Onset of the discussion about that being an issue, so. It has been kind of known and talked about for a while, but there. There hadn't been a change. There was a time lapse and waiting to see if that had changed as a practice.
And I read that Attorney General's opinion and it's still kinda vague, it says the commissions does not have to pay their mileage if they. But it doesn't say you can't either, you can in other words like if if I drove in here if you know uh to work and build my mileage and. And and it says if it's if it's deemed necessary for the public good or something, well, that's vague as hell. You could say, well, Randy driving to uh from four miles out of town to the courthouse is good for the public good, we can improve my mileage. That's in other words, it still seems like it's up to the red discretion of the commissioners at the time, it's not illegal in other words, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not for it, I'm not for doing it, I don't wanna do it, I can and it doesn't look good, it doesn't look good that commissioner billing mileage driving to the courthouse. I think that's not because I didn't, we didn't run for the office to be getting mileage driving to and from here, I didn't.
No, I didn't either.
But so anyway, that's the issue on there and that's you know where that's at but. Anything else we need to do on this time card stuff Dawn?
No, I was just looking at the website and I think maybe we really should just look at adding hours to every page.
I told that to Hannah. So my question is was the time clock sure thanks um. What? Okay, what system does it input the data straight to your contact?
Okay, so this is kinda my understanding of how it works, everything will be inputted into the time clock system. And um you know, one of the reports is also a. A printed where we can print the document to have the employee sign the need that those signature requirements. But um my understanding is it creates an export straight out of its file. And then that export is built into the contact fields that will accept it and then I do an import into the contact system.
Okay.
And so all of the hours.
But you don't have to hand, you don't have to hand, it's not data entry, it's just an export import, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's kinda my understanding and we matched um tried to match our. Categories for clock hands um. The same as that, I may have to separate out the lead time, I'm not really sure, cause we haven't got to that part of the training. This is the weirdest training I've ever gone through honestly, cause they're basically setting it up as we go and then they're training you on.
Well, they kinda wanna cater to our needs, so to see if it's not just a one thing, here it is.
And then you have to learn to use it, so.
They they can cater to what we want, which is great actually because then, cause I'm sure we operate differently than somebody else. So no, I think it's good. It'll make us more efficient, it'll be easier help for you. Hopefully, we won't have all these time card discrepancies and and uh all this stuff going on.
Now, your salaried employees are still gonna be salaried, but their hours are gonna be imported in regardless. Um but they are required to provide or to clock in and out. And part of that is is basically if we were ever audited by Fair Labor Standards and we have been audited twice since I've been an employee. Um they they look at that and you have the burden of proof, so if say for example you had a supervisor. That they all of a sudden deemed was non exempt and you were required to pay them for time. Then it's such that it's that particular employee, they'll tell Fair Labor Standards, oh. Maybe for example, I work five hours a week overtime and I never got compensated. If you don't have the time for it to prove it, then they pay based upon the employee's work. Um and cause you to have to pay.
So we're gonna obviously have then have all the the uh those people uh the manager managerial or whatever you call the. Elected people to uh clock in also, right? Yeah, or salaries, right, you said salaries.
Yes.
You are gonna have me clock in?
Yes, they they will be required to now um I haven't got the time cards. For those um you know, there was a motion to look at all of the department heads. So I will try to have that done and have them here for you on Thursday.
That's good.
That's fine, you're doing a great job, thanks for doing all this work, a lot of extra work.
Yes. It's been a lot of extra work.
Like you don't have enough to do.
I have teams I need to get caught up, actually tomorrow is gonna be my deed day, so hopefully I can get caught up.
And I have a lot going on right now, I don't have anything to report yet, but I am in the process of. Getting out all of that financial information to the company that we're interested and I I fielded a call from.
Oh, bless them.
Mrs. Von Fang called me from.
Oh, Dorson.
Mm-hmm, and we had a conversation and you know, I think. I was able to at least express that there's not an immediate danger at everyone that. Everyone that's involved at the nursing home feels like there's an immediate danger, there's really not.
I told him that too, I know.
Yeah, I mean, there are two options, either the person that's there stays or they go, and if they go, we step in.
We could step in and we could state would step in, that's what made me feel better when we talked to that little lady you talk at KDS. She says all of them have stayed open when they closed twenty in last year, that made me feel good. Because I was heard hearing before that that uh some of them had closed, but the state will step in and help transition to a different. Management outfit and at least temporarily until we get going, so I agree too, we should be okay. Now, we gotta you know, deal with running it, but. I think that'll happen, no, I they I told him the same thing too Alexis that. Well, you know what happened when assisted living closed, they thought that you see he could close that so easily.
That's exactly.
Everybody thought, man, he could just pull apart. And it ain't that simple, I said, no, the whole visiting homes, a whole different deal.
At least it says that we have to give permission to close down.
You have to give ninety day notice and then like Jennifer said, we can sue and like hey said to lock that time up until we get somebody. To come in to transition to take it over, I feel better about that all the time. We need to. Tell the public that now that better, I think I should probably.
So. I last Thursday it called a special meeting, but if is it considered a special meeting on every Thursday? Or is it considered a regular now that yours done?
You could just say uh. I don't know what you wanna call it.
It's not only that like with special meetings, those are state or state or subject.
Just just another regular meeting.
Just uh yeah temporary regular meeting.
I think what I had put it as a subject matter was to conclude or to um follow up on. And complete unfinished business and conduct any new business that might come before the board, is that?
Yes, that's exactly.
We wanted to get with Mister uh.
Okay, so and I'm gonna try to get Eric auditing, I'm gonna do the time, I'm gonna get the time cards for the time clock or for the. Department heads for you guys to review. And then I'm gonna look on or work on getting you like a policy for the time clock system. Okay, now.
And also also I was wanting to ask you Dawn about this before with the doors, you gave me the thing with the nursing home doors and that from this.
That.
DH space is should you you know the price originally gave us, right Alexis she was.
Yeah, twenty eight.
Or should we get you want me to contact them and? Cause I don't know what happened, we do you know what happened there?
I don't, I know everybody says I'm supposed to have everything, but that is the only thing that I have. That is the the bid that was approved and so normally I give that to Hannah and then she matches it with the invoice when it's.
Okay, and and just to fill you in Randy. We were given three bids by Mister. Back off.
Back off, yeah.
We approved this bid.
Okay.
He came back to us months and months later and said. He had spoken with that company and before they did the work, they wanted a schematic. With the fire ratings of the walls adjacent and connecting to the doors they were replacing. So I instructed him that that would probably be most attainable from the engineer that was hired. Uh Mister. Eric, no, no, that's the wrong person.
No, Eric is right.
It is, it is Eric, yeah, from from the engineering. Camp Johnson.
Yeah, Johnson Eric Johnson. Johnson and Campbell.
Okay. That is where it was lost, that is where that is where it was cut off. I have not heard anything about it since, except now it's being brought to our attention again by Mister Shale that it's not been done yet. Have is that is that amount of funds still in our, cause that was from last year.
Technically, I would have transferred it into the capital improvement fund so we could take. It out of that or we can transfer it back and then pay for it out of the.
I'd like to see.
What are you talking about the uh the blueprints things you're talking about or what?
The doors.
This this total.
Now, do we but if we call these guys again that this uh and we say. We want you to come and do these doors now, they'll say but they'll say we need these blueprints, that's what you just said, then what are we gonna do?
Then you say then you contact Eric Johnson.
Eric Johnson?
Yes, out of Concordia.
Okay, and you got their number and all that for me? I'll get with them.
Johnson and Campbell, you wanna write that down Eric Johnson, Johnson and Campbell. Out of Concordia. That is who this company needs to get. The information from because we paid this person and that company seventy thousand dollars to come up with.
Wow.
Plans.
Just for.
For plans. And to coordinate. The.
Do you have that number?
I don't.
Just text text me later. Yeah, just text me if you can remember Eric Johnson ever, just text me or email or email. But uh yeah, I don't run off, it's uh but I will contact these guys and I'll say then Eric Johnson has the. And then you want me to say, hey.
Seven eight five. Two four three seventeen fifty five.
That's just Eric Johnson?
Yes, that is who was paid to produce the funds and to then make sure that the project happened, which.
Well, I'm. I'm gonna call him and say.
He to provide whatever is needed to this company.
Right, for this place and this this DH space was the guys doing do this doors, right?
Yes, I I think somewhere along the line it says that was overhead door company, but I don't know.
Well, there's another one.
No, it does say that because I called overhead door company and I asked them about it and they said, well, we didn't get your bid. So then I said, oh, I so you're right, I was.
There says a twenty eight thousand, but but the front page of that whole thing is somebody else. Right there, see it's.
I think that was a requirement.
Oh, that's. Yeah, that's the government, yeah, bill Medicare bill.
Okay, I I thought they were the same.
Anyway, I could call him and. Say so I'll say let's get going and fix this stuff, you want me to do that and talk to him, say what's the deal, let's fix these doors and we gave a bid, you gave us a bid, right? You approved it and it's twenty eight thousand, right?
Yep.
So we'll go I'll call them and they'll remind me, we'll bring that up too Monday or Thursday. I'll try to call them here tomorrow today or Wednesday. And try to get this ball rolling, okay, and also with the roof, you said you're still waiting on that.
Yes, I will call K Camp and I'll have a report back on.
And they were gonna get with that uh Ray roofing.
Correct.
Yeah, just to touch base, I don't wanna, I'm not harassing these guys, but we need to kick them in the rear and get this rolling, or it seems like it doesn't get done.
That's right.
Sometimes you just gotta kick somebody's ass to get something done.
Well, and you're exactly right, I think the problem that the commission has had, which I'm guilty of it too, I kinda came into it acting this way is. We sit here, we wait for the information to come from us come for us and then we talk about it here and then we leave and then we come back on Monday again. Then Dawn's left to do all the phone calls, all the follow up.
All the legwork.
Yeah, and it's not.
I I mean, I'm glad you do and I wanna coordinate with both of you guys.
Yes.
Because we just need to get this stuff going. All right, and.
Is Mil levy two Ls, no?
M I L, yeah, or the two?
I think it's two, I always.
I'm thinking Mil spec.
I think I feel like I've seen it both ways and I don't know if it's just my misinterpretation of it being two Ls and it's.
I've seen it both ways too.
I always of my.
Yeah.
I always spell it with two Ls, but.
Anyway, though uh. There's that Ray roofing, right, that's who we hire and are gonna do it, right?
Yeah, that's who K Camp is gonna work.
K Camp will.
To revise their.
Okay.
And it and he didn't really go into great detail about what was missing, but I kinda took it the base up on the core sample.
Yeah, they do a core sample and goes down into the rough into the like the ceiling tile things and water running in there fungus in there mold and. That's we got that does have to be fixed, cause you could have uh the government can almost shut the place down if they found mold in there. And I don't say there is, I don't know, I'm just, you know, that needs to be addressed though.
Two Ls, it's a property taxes based on is this value a property?
Okay.
And you were I and I bugged you earlier, maybe we need to send Chase Wagner a.
Yes, I I that will be my intention to send all of that.
All of them, yeah, saying thank you for we we've decided not to go with you, whatever, blah blah blah.
Yes, I have that on my to do list, but I'm gonna add it again just in case I have.
And I think it's Chase would be a good employee, uh but just didn't work out.
You did mark that down already Dawn, you're gonna take care of that?
Yeah, I think I have it up higher, but I don't know.
And you know, I don't know what we can do about like Michael says, this road closed at one fifty if these guys are upset because they wanna go through there and I know Michael said it's. The it's dangerous because it's by the spilling creek there, but. They said it ain't that bad, so you know, there you go, who does Michael's though, highway supervisor or the. Director of Public Works, he has the power to do that, I guess, but. I don't know. Cause there's a lot of roads.
Is to somebody that has a tractor versus a bag to somebody who's trying to travel with a car.
Oh, I know.
It might be.
And 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 most people and these farmers would be careful and they'd see that the road may be closed and they would be careful and get away from it. But some person may not see it and drive off there and get then we'd get sued, so Michael's got a good point too and the farmers just wanna be able to use it too. And the farmers, you know, and just like the bottom roads, we got a lot of roads closed in this county and and.
That's the bottom line, they get irritated because every time they turn around and wanna take a different route, now they're being rerouted farther and farther away. And there's no. Time near future, we have plans to fix these things.
Yeah, and it's uh. And I know maybe it's a judgment call, Michael's being safety, he's trying to do, I guess, being safe for the county so we don't get sued and I understand that, but Jiminy.
Yeah.
I don't know what you do about that.
I'd actually like to look at that, you said it's one fiftieth, right?
Yeah, right there, right when you right when you go you go to Sylvan on a curve, right there, turn left and then winds right back and then there's that spilling. Bridge, bridge and then it goes right there is where it is, check that out, see how bad it is.
I I would like to look at it and I'll bring you some.
But I'm gonna get that bottom road open for them guys, cause that's just, yeah, I sulked it in, but get a bulldozer in there and push that dirt out, they that's all you need to do. Uh we need to get this stuff fixed, or some of it, I know it's a lot of it. So are we about caught up on what we wanna do today Alexis?
Yes, I will bring you more information as soon as I hear back from any of these companies, there was something else we were both gonna check on. The counties that have used the um.
Yeah, I haven't.
I haven't done.
I I talked to the Lincoln, I talked to the Lincoln City, remember I told you about that one guy here?
And they're.
And they liked him, okay, and he thought he was being very, he was asking, do you need my help to do you have problems and they said, no, we're okay.
Yeah, and that's kind of nice because then we don't have to pay out of pocket for that of our own budget. But at the same time, we do wanna make sure that we have the necessary resources for these people or that the. It was kind of interesting too that he has the ability to. Produce an an unique a unique plan if possible, if we were to do self.
And he would he'd be like catered to like uh create a specific plan. He'd be like cater to like uh create a specific plans or But the other guy I thought was pretty good too, that hub guy. He was a bigger corporation which have more, have more
That company has more to provide on the HR end of other things too.
I think they would be better HR help with Dawn. I had this one guy, he was a good guy, but he only has four employees. He's not gonna be much of assistance, I don't think, in HR. He may be helpful, I don't know.
Sent the other gal a message, but I haven't heard back from her.
Was she planning on maybe coming to give presentation?
Yeah, I I asked her to, since I hadn't heard back from her, to get on the on the seventeen.
Well, I kinda feel like since we're waiting on the time clock to be initiated, we have a few weeks to determine what we're gonna do for the benefits. But like they said, we actually need to jump on that because of the October deadline for the state plan. So maybe we don't have a few days.
I know, I know this. I think that I have the big information that the hub guy needed in order to be able to you know, see whether or not our our company is a good insurer or a bad insurer.
Yes, yes, the the profiling or whatever you call it, yeah.
So I've got that. Um and basically he just told me that I needed the ratio that she, he said this is what the state's gonna give you anyways. He says, what was your premiums? What was your usage? They sent me the usage, broke out by, you know, everything. And I put in the spreadsheet our premium, which let's just say we didn't even use thirty five percent of what we paid for premium. It's just, it's mind boggling. I just came to believe it. And I know that Deborah asked the previous years. I have not located those, but I'll go out and ask her.
That would be interesting to know, even from my own just knowledge, because that, yeah.
I think I just did the math really quickly and if I I was like thirty five percent.
Now see, that's where it makes you sick because you could pay the people, you know, instead of having a ten dollar an hour insurance plan, you could pay them five dollars an hour more and they go out and get their own. I mean, or pay them, or pay them the ten dollars an hour and they go out and get a five dollar an hour insurance policy on their own. I I mean, yeah, I know. So so we we cannot legally incentivize an employee to not take a health insurance policy. So everyone gets it or nobody gets it. You know, we either cover a minimum of the health insurance and pay really well, or we cover a maximum of the health insurance and pay these wages that are not extremely competitive. It's it's such a one or the other. It's a really puts a bind on a company, a co- we're not a company, but on a on an entity that only has eighty employees.
But because we are so big, we're required to provide
Over fifty, you have to, yeah, that is totally anti constitutional, but don't get me started.
It just, um anyway, so I have at least last year's to get them the number and I think that that's what that Mister Day had said he needed to. So I think we're good to go. The he told me, um, the hub guy told me Blue Cross Bushfield and Aetna, they will have absolutely no problem. I just have to sign them sign off on it to get the information for claims that. But when they go to a third party insurance carrier, that's where they need the health questionnaires to determine the health of our of our organization.
Yeah, and that and that is the whole basis for which they assess your financial contribution, so I mean rightfully so. They need to know what kind of expenses they're talking about. Okay, well, that that's hopeful then. At least maybe we could save a little money on our insurance package this year. I almost, I have an inclination to go with the hub company first because
I think they'd have more services to support HR and uh just other stuff. That guy was pretty thorough. The other guy, they were both good guys. They ones died just smaller than the other guy on his on his business.
Now, the gala is is we're still waiting on coming. She offers the same thing that the hub does.
Just a little different. Do you have any recommendation that would you prefer?
I talked to both of the organizations. Honestly, I think they provide about the same amount of services.
Did she give you a quote?
She did not. So that's why I wanna get her here so that she can
Is she coming Monday?
Um, I'm gonna try to get her on on Monday.
Cause we're gonna have to, I mean, we have to make a decision no later than the end of this month, which is only two month, two meetings away.
We do?
Yeah, because we needed to have that six weeks.
Right now, we have
There's ninety days before the end, but he also said he needed about six weeks before the ninety days to get all the figures and everything punched in, so
I'm sorry.
No, what was, what was the deadline? October first?
October first is the deadline to notify the state.
Cause that's the ninety days. So six weeks before that is, well, August, I guess.
No, so we're currently the state insurance plan and that's, we don't like that because it's too expensive, is that?
It's really gone up and maybe not at the same percentage that they've experienced in the past here with increases, incremental increases. But I don't see it as being any more valuable than what I've gotten in my private insurance under Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I mean, I've had private insurance policy is under Blue Cross Bushfield and now the the county policy, it's way more expensive and I'm not getting any more benefit to my
But you think it'd be cheaper because we're got eighty people.
But it all depends on what your usage has been.
Well, your usage.
And of course, their pricing, their prices based upon the pool.
The whole pool of state key employees.
So you're also helping compensate for other groups that are high risk and
So that's what's driving some of the pricing and and I just, I think it's a maybe good to at least look at because it may be that the state is the cheaper plan, you know, even that um
Well, we should probably compare before we, the state, the state again this year along with this hub and this other guy.
Well, and and well, they'll do that for us. And he said, if the state of Kansas is better for you, I will tell you that.
Well, we need to stick with what's best for us financially, but we also need to not be afraid to to walk away if it's not. And and but and signing a contract with them is a lot different than doing a yearly agreement with um a private, you know, private insurer. So I have one more piece of correspondence and I'm sorry, I'm glad I opened my email. I forgot. Um, this is from Dawn, you didn't bring this to the table, right? From Mister Keach, I believe?
No, partly because technically you guys don't do that now. You advertise the position, so I'm not sure. I I saw the email. I have not printed it.
Okay, did we already advertise though? What didn't we already?
We advertised a couple of months ago, two months ago.
So Barnard was still and they have Jim Harlow on the board.
Well, Jim Harlow passed away.
So technically, I think really in in years past, the board has always went out and talked somebody within those districts to be willing.
Well, they've not brought anyone to in the last couple of years, but is this to, is this to?
This would be filling that.
To fill an an unexpired term?
Jim Harlow's.
So I don't know if you wanna advertise. I don't know if you wanna take one person's word from it or
Well, this is what the email says, Randy. At the next Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting, we are requesting that you appoint John Webkey to the rural fire, Barnard Rural Fire Board. At the regularly scheduled meeting of the Barnard Rural Fire Department on six five two thousand nineteen, all members presented approving, asking Mister Webkey to join the fire board. This morning I contacted John Webkey and he stated he would accept the position upon approval of the Lincoln County Commissioner. Thank you for your time and consideration. So this
Who who wrote that?
Uh Mister Keach, I'm sorry. So we had just appointed him, but that's when we advertised the opening on the board. So now there's an unexpired position.
And I don't know how you really want to do that. And what I really need to do too is also get the all the board members you have appointed yet.
Because we still have openings.
We still have openings and I really haven't sent out any notifications, cause I wanted to try to do that all at one time, but now I'm kinda feeling bad because it was in February till now.
I do have another question. It was, it was brought to my attention that there's a possibility that one of our appointments to the board could be, could uh could be personally contracted to one of the employees of the entity over which they're watching.
You've lost me.
Well, they're not our employees, so I can say. I there's a concern that we appointed Mister Krangle to the hospital board and that he is the personal attorney of one of the doctors. You know, I guess there is a, there is a direct financial link and interest. I don't know that
But he could abstain anytime and had anything to do with
He's just in there as a citizen. But I knew that beforehand. I guess I should have told you guys, cause maybe it could be of conflict of interest possibly, but at the time.
No, you haven't found anyone. I understand. There it, there does seem to be that cycle. It seems like we got a lot of requests that one time for the conservation district. We had like all these requests and then or conservation board. And then another time, like the hospital board, we haven't had any interest.
I had ten people I asked and they turned it down.
Um, how about I add that to my to do list that I will get you what board members still had not been
Right, and I will say, I it it would probably be appropriate to say that appointment of a member to fulfill an unexpired term could be definitely a recommendation of the board. To advertise an opening when a position has been fully filled for its term, I think should be a regular operation of the commission to do that advertising. But to to appoint someone to fulfill someone's unexpired term seems legitimate.
Well, they don't have that many people up around Barnard anyway to pick and choose from. They like they got a thousand people up there, they gonna pick.
I don't care either way. I just, I just ready, cause I just still, we still have those other board members and I just
The only thing is a different, I I he probably, I know him, he's a good guy. The thing is if we do this like now, appoint him, then it would kinda deviate, deviate, we'll deviate from our regular policy of advertising.
No, I'm I'm with you on that because I I push for advertising.
Yeah, then we could say he, after we advertise, then they could say they preferred Mister Webkey and then we could say we approved.
Well, let's go ahead and Don't do that next week, Dawn. We have too much going on. Let's do that for the twenty fourth. Why don't you just drop that down? The twenty fourth, we will re address the open board positions. Because I have no problem paying for local advertising as well.
No, and it should be. That's we're being transparent to the public. And we got an opening here. Nothing against this, but this is a board putting their prick guy in, and he's probably fine. But the rest of the community don't have no say over that or don't even maybe know what's going on. And they could say, oh, they slipped away on Webkey in there. But you know what I'm saying? No one opens himself up for criticism because of non transparency. So, you know.
So what do we have on Thursday's agenda then before we get your
If I can get Eric Audi, I will get Eric Audi, um time cards for the department heads for you to review your time clock system and follow up on the nursing home for my side for that for the road.
And I'll try to contact this uh guys on these doors uh and uh the the for the nursing home doors and talk to them about, they call this uh guy who did the blueprint in Concordia. Whatever his name is.
And I will do the
And I'll try to also get with some of those uh those cities, you know, the counties that contracted to this one guy to see
I'll call mine as well and then I will also do the job description that I brought.
The guys who got him and he has a must do here, Cherokee County or somewhere.
This was your copy of that schedule and then um Dawn, I have the budgets. Do you have these budgets? These are, uh who came today? Emergency management, health department?
The only one I don't have is Rhonda and she said she could give me a copy, so.
Okay, then I'm just gonna hang on to these and this, do you want this, oh, do you have the CASA budget? CASA or? Okay, that that one. And then do you want this, you need this notice of the public hearing?
Heather sent me a message back and said they are asking for ten
Ten year tax exemption. Is that what they already got?
I I don't think they have an IRV.
But I mean, didn't they get a tax exemption just for their original?
I thought they got original tax abatement to beat out of here.
That's what I thought. And that's what I'm asking. Do you know, Dawn?
I, not that I am aware of.
Oh, okay.
And I think those IRVs
Oh, that was, that was John Deere or Carrico, wasn't it? Didn't they have the ten year? Is that who built that building out there?
No, that used to be uh old Century Manufacturing. Before that, it was, that thing's been there, that building. Oh, no, Carrico's was, oh, that's street plumbing there.
But that's what I'm saying.
Carrico built it, Carrico built.
They built that. So I think they got an abatement to do that. I think, I think, so maybe
That was a long time ago though. You know, sixteen nineteen seventies or eighties.
It was?
Oh, yeah.
They may have gotten, US Towers may have gotten like a constitutional tax abatement, which allows you to like have a hearing, so pharmacolegal, capital, walking, or I think it's close to expiring if they didn't expire. But the city can also do a constitutional tax abatement for businesses within their setting limits, so it's up to the person. And then there's also neighborhood revitalization. Now, I know that US Towers did I think the the constitutional tax abatement on like their forklifts and they had some machinery that they did. So but all of those have since expired, but IRVs part of it, I I don't know of a company that's had an IRV since I've been clerk. I know APAC used to do IRVs when they would buy that big equipment. But I think they will
I believe we did. That is just the OCCK newsletter. These I gave to Dawn. These are just the envelopes. And then um this was Mister Do's report and that is the this is the report, which see, this is something I need to file here. This is the report from downtown Lincoln, downtown Sylvan Historic Society.
Um, yes, and those are just for our, for Lincoln County owned properties. I maybe should have
Yeah, so it's not like the entire thing, but it would just be the properties that Lincoln County owns.
Are we done, Les?
I believe so. I'm gonna follow up on all that and we'll meet on Thursday. Is that okay?
Ten's fine.
Okay, Thursday at ten, thirteenth. Thank you.